Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Kildy.
Here.
Trustee Craven.
Here.
President Protim Mulche.
Present.
President Santangelo.
Present. Let the record reflect that all trustees are present. Mr. Mulche, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Everyone, please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are no amendments.
I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to address the Camarillo Library Board about an item that is not on the agenda? It appears that nobody does, so I will move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move consent.
Second.
The motion carries unanimously. We don't have any departmental items this evening. No legal counsel items this evening. Are there any comments from staff?
Yes, we do have with us tonight a library director, Mr. Apodaca, and he will be giving us a report.
So, thank you, Library Board.
You want to move that? There you go.
Yeah, here we are. Is that a little better? Yeah. Thank you yet again. It's an honor to be here to represent the best library on the planet. I have the best job in the world, and I hate to brag about it, but it's true. To get into our last month's activities, it was a challenge. I think the community as a whole faced some challenges last month. Goes without saying, I suppose, but the library found itself right in the middle of it. Coincidentally, the fire coincided with Rancho Capone, our nearby high school's finals week, where we were inviting therapy dogs to come over for students to pet a furry pal during their time of stress. That evolved into a public event that's open for all ages of the community, where people came in, sat with a dog. This was during, you know, the Woolsey Fire, and some of the Channel Islands professors who told me afterwards that they had been evacuated from where they were, sat in and had a chance to read aloud to a dog, pet a dog, sit with a dog, and it was all heartwarming, I guess I should say. We found ourselves as a place of conversation, and I think that was very interesting and vital to the recovery, the health of the community. So, that was a very nice event that we had, and again, it sort of coincided with the de-stressing over the finals event that we had. We had done a lot of outreach in November that, you know, you have in the report that I give over of our activities. I feel that our outreach last month in particular is worth highlighting to first five Ventura County. They hold a book fest event where we, of course, host our booth and read stories aloud to children throughout the day, and all of the kids there leave with a free book. So, that's a very nice event. We hosted an opera performance. This opera was brought to you by a local talent named Nikos, and I won't begin to pronounce his last name, but he had come and gave a very impassioned performance there for us, and people in the crowd reported after that they would love to have this individual back, and in fact, two people left in tears because they felt so moved by these opera pieces. I think it highlighted how uncultured I am because I didn't know what they were saying, but it was still a lot of fun. And then we finished up the month with a Harry Potter-themed escape room. These are puzzle challenges. We have to register folks well in advance, and registration fills up the day we open it, and who knew that this sort of thing would be so popular? And just last week, we had our gingerbread-making event that wraps up the holidays and a visit from Santa. Santa read stories to children. We had over 300 in attendance there on our Santa visit. So, we're taking a breath and moving forward now into the new year, and excited about that. And thank you.
Your Honor, Mrs. Chairman, I think you're doing a great job, and I think our library continues to do a wonderful job for our residents and people who live nearby. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Madam President. I just want to echo what Mrs. Craven is saying. I did have one question for you.
Yes.
As to why it's the greatest library on earth. I noticed, first of all, on the library stats, and I really appreciate now having the year over year, and I guess I'm just occupying a different place, but I really noticed that the e-audiobook checkouts are going way up in a big trajectory. Is there any reason why?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. So, this is a trend I feel we're not alone in, in terms of public libraries usage changing. Our physical collection is not doing what it used to do, meaning the paper books. That number sadly is not where it used to be last year, and this year-to-year is revealing that, I think. So, we look at the other side of that coin. Our e-electronic checkouts are climbing way up. This is nice. I think what we see are people coming into the library with a smartphone. That's really changing what's happening. Now, you can get your electronic book, your e-audio, listen to it in the car, whatever else, on an app. The app is easy. The app means you're not taking CDs in and out of your car, losing, damaging discs as it goes along, and we get a lot of life, and I think it's a good investment moving forward when it comes to purchasing these things because we can show a great return on investment when you purchase one book on CD or book on tape. Those only had a certain lifespan. Now, our ebooks can be checked out over and over on this app and never wear out. So, I think this is where seeing our return happening. Now, moving forward, I think dedicating more funds, more resources to the app and to purchasing these e-materials will be important. We see a lot of seniors, population that comes in who bring in their devices, their smartphones, tablets, especially after the holidays, and they want to know how to use it and how they can get things for free, and here we are, ready to save the day. So, I think across the demographics, we're seeing that, not only from the younger audience, but seniors as well, and we're holding on and trying to be a little bit more strategic, I think, with how we're allocating funds. Thank you. Yeah.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say that I heard about the activities with the dogs, especially during the fire, and I agree with you. I just think it's a really important, to have a gathering place for our community. So, thank you.
Oh, wonderful. Yes, thank you for that comment.
This meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call the meeting to the Camarillo Sanitary District Board to order. Let the record reflect that all directors are present. And are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments to the agenda.
I don't have any speaker cards. All right. Is there anyone that would like to address the Camarillo Sanitary District about an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I will move to the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
All right.
Second.
Second, please vote. That passes unanimously. I don't have any legal counsel items this evening. And are there any comments from staff? No comments? Are there any comments from directors? No comments. We have two departmental items this evening that will be heard jointly with the Camarillo City Council, so I will recess the meeting now, reconvene when the items are addressed by the City Council.
Okay, I'd like to call the Camarillo Successor Agency Special Meeting for December 12th to order, please. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. We'll go down to item one. It's amendments to the agenda. Any amendments to?
No amendments.
No amendments to this. Public comments for the Camarillo Successor Agency. Seeing no one come forward, let's go down to item three. It's the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
There's a motion and second and further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. All right, we'll go down to, let's see, legal counsel. Any comments from staff tonight?
No comments.
Any comments from board members tonight for the successor agency? Hearing none, we will adjourn. All right, so that brings us to the Camarillo City Council Regular Meeting for December 12th. I'd like to call that to order, please, and I'd like to have the record reflect that all council members are present. We'll go down to the amendments to the agenda on the City Council. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
No amendments. I do not have any presentations tonight, so it'll bring us down to the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. All right, so that gets us down to City Council. The first is a 2019 meeting schedule.
Public Works? Oh, I'm on the wrong page. Sorry.
That's okay. We're good? All right, City Council. Ms. Madeline, do you have any staff report on that?
Yes, so each year, the City Council adopts a meeting schedule for the upcoming year. The council regularly meets on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. We do have some exceptions, which I've highlighted in the agenda report. The goal-setting meeting, the budget study session on May 29th. We do go dark the first meeting in August. We've changed the meetings in November to accommodate the Thanksgiving holiday. We have a special meeting for the reorganization on December 4th, and then we also go dark the last meeting in December. And the draft meeting schedule was in the packet for your review, and the recommendation is to approve the schedule.
Any questions? Yes, Ms. Craven?
Yeah, we're going to be having the budget study session in May. We're going back to May, where we used to be. We are going to get the budget quite a bit earlier than we.
Yes, it's anticipated and scheduled that we will have the study session a little sooner, and with the budget adoption, the first meeting in June instead of the second meeting in June, that will allow year-end activities that need to happen and accommodate the staff needs to make the July 1 go forward for the new.
I'm talking about accommodating. The council needs to read it ahead of time. We're going to get it quite a bit ahead of time before the 29th of May.
That's correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the approval.
Just a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That also passes unanimously. So, that gets us down to B, which is the 2019 Annual Events Calendar. Ms. Madeline, do you have a staff on that?
Yes, so this is your annual events calendar. It includes the meeting dates that you just approved, city events, conferences, and some anticipated community events and holidays. I do want to note that I did send you out a corrected Page 2, which reflects the budget meeting on May 29th, and other than that, the recommendation is to approve the events calendar as presented with the correction.
Question.
Question, Ms. Craven?
Does anybody know when school starts, especially Pleasant Valley? This seems awfully early for the crossing guard event. We usually try to reserve the first couple weeks of August, and last year, it was scheduled early, and then we moved it back a week.
I don't have that date, when the schools start.
I don't either, and that's scheduled by Rose. I could check with her to make sure that.
If it is, if school doesn't start for a couple weeks, I mean, when we started this crossing guard breakfast, it was when they got their information and they meet with the deputy who's working with them, but it was really close to the first week of school, and it somehow kept getting pushed back and back into August when we tried to go dark. And so, I'm asking if, I mean, I'm not going to object to approving this, but if school doesn't start that week, then I'd ask to push it back a little bit.
Okay, I'll follow up with Rose, and I'll send out an email and let you know.
Thank you, because usually, school doesn't start till the 20th or so.
Any other questions made by? Jeffrey, I have one. I just want to make sure I got my dates right. On the meeting schedule, Mrs. Craven had brought up the budget study session on May 29th.
Yes.
But my understanding that we've got one for June 5th as well. Is that?
No, that's the correction.
Is that a correction?
The correct version that I sent out.
Okay, thank you. Great. I didn't have an opportunity to study that. All right, so are there any other questions? I'd like to make a motion.
I'll move adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second and further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, so that gets us down to the 2019 City Council Committee Appointments, and I want to thank everybody for getting their appointment on a really on-time basis. It was really good. It doesn't always work that way. As you can see, I tried to put everybody as balanced as I could here, and so, nobody is doing any one thing too much, so I tried to go with what most of you, you know, had requested, that you wanted here with a balance that we've always tried to do here. So, I don't know if there's any comments or anybody wants to ask any questions about anything, is certainly willing to.
I like the committees you gave me. That's important.
Tremblay, anything?
You kept me off of animal control, so that was good.
Okay, yes. All right.
This looks great.
Move the approval is presented.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Thank you all for your willingness to serve. That passes unanimously. Thank you. It'll be a really good year, a busy year, and we'll do some great things. All right, so now, we get down to finance. It's a report from the independent auditors. Do we have a staff report? Do we want to open up the CAMSAN at this point? If that's the case, we need to open that up, please.
You need to reopen.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I would like to reconvene the meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District. Is there a motion to approve staff's recommendation?
We're not there yet.
Let's wait until we.
Okay, yes.
Okay, Janie, thank you.
Tonight with us, we have Deborah Harper. She's a partner with the city's audit firm of Lantz, Hall &amp; Lunghard, and she's going to present a report on the city's comprehensive annual financial report.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, make sure you talk right into that. Yeah, that's good.
I know. I want to kiss it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me here. I'm happy to present the results. I did meet with the Audit Committee earlier this evening, and we had a good discussion on the results. Before you, you'll have the audit opinion, which is included in the CAFR. Also, you'll have the report on internal control. With the opinion letter, you received an unmodified opinion, which means that the report is presented to you with a clean opinion, is what they used to call it, right? And what that means to you is that those numbers are good. We feel very comfortable with those numbers that finance has provided to you, and you can make good, healthy decisions on that financial report. In addition to that is a report on internal controls. What's important to know is on those internal controls, as your auditors, we don't necessarily provide an audit of those internal controls, but we do make sure that we obtain an understanding of them and use them when we perform our audits. It helps us with our planning stages and with our test work and making sure that we have a full understanding of the controls within your finance department and throughout the city. If we had any concerns, we would provide those to you in the report, and I'm happy to say that there is no recommendations. We don't have any concerns of material weakness or significant deficiencies, and you won't see any of that written in the report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the CAFR or any of those letters, but you have a great staff, and I appreciate working with them.
All right, are there any questions? I have one. When you were doing this audit, and typically, I ask this question, is there anything that we're not doing that you would recommend that we do?
No, if there was, we would provide it in there. There's always normal dialogue within the audit that we would talk with the finance department if there was some tweaking or maybe some recommendations that we see from other agencies that we audit, but I don't have anything to report to you at this time for that. They're doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay, did you have a question?
I did. I had a couple, actually. I just, first of all, I want to echo that I think finance staff is doing a terrific job, and thank you. I think this is the first year of the audit engagement, or second year?
Second year.
Second year, actually, right. Just a couple of questions on the CAFR, and the first question that I have is on the introductory section, and it's on Romanet, Page 8, under Major Initiatives, under the General Fund. And that section indicates, as I understand it, it's been the case for the last several years, that some funds historically have revenue sources that either don't grow or grow more slowly than expenditures. So, historically, they've relied on transfers from the General Fund to bridge funding gaps. And it also indicates that staff is continuing to pursue options. This may be more of a question for Ms. Rocha, too, to minimize general fund subsidies. Just two questions. Number one, putting it in context, though, is that a large amount, are we talking about a large amount of money relative to the overall city budget? I don't believe we are.
In comparison to the overall city budget, it's not as significant. It's, you know, it is general fund dollars that are funding that, mainly the citywide lighting landscaping district.
Right, but we're talking about a small amount of dollars, relatively speaking to the overall, correct?
Relative to the entire budget, yes.
And then, my other related question was, in terms of pursuit of options, are really the only options here revenue enhancements, which is, I guess, a euphemism for raising fees or taxes, respectively?
Your choices are increased revenues, and in the case of that district, that would require increasing assessments, or reducing expenses, which would require reducing services. Those are your two choices. So, what staff does is evaluate the amount of subsidies for these activities, in this case, the citywide lighting landscaping district and the transit fund. And at the budget time, they do evaluate what that subsidy is. If there are any options to pursue, staff will evaluate that as well.
Okay, all right. And then, just a couple of other quick questions, if I can. I don't want to prolong this. On the MDA, on the Management Discussion and Analysis Section, on Page 7 and 10, 10 and 11, respectively, in the report for my colleagues, that deals with the financial highlights and the statement of the city's net position as of fiscal year-end, June 30 of 2018. Is it fair to say that fiscal year-end 2018 is relatively unchanged from fiscal year-end 2017 in terms of the city's financial health?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, all right. And did there occur, in your opinion, any significant material changes to the city's financial position during 2017 slash 18?
No.
Okay, so we're in good shape overall. You would characterize the city as being in good shape overall? Because I certainly would.
That's correct.
I just wanted to hear from you, actually, and from the auditor as well. That's where I was going with this. Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Any other questions? All right. What's the will of the council?
Move to receive and file the CAFR. And various requests.
There's a motion to receive and file. Do we need to vote on that, counselor?
Yes, you should, and then.
All right, that passes unanimously. Mr. Mulche, would you like to take?
And? Yes. And is there a motion to approve the staff's recommendation?
Some.
Second.
Please vote. That passes unanimously, and at this time, I will recess the Camarillo Sanitary District until the City Council gets to his next joint item.
Okay, so that gets us down to Public Works. It's a crosswalk at the Village at the Park and Whitworth Place intersection. Do we have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know there are a lot of citizens who are hoping to speak on this matter, and they've been instructed to come to the 7:30 session. Are we able to delay this topic till that time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be curious to know why they'd be coming at 7:30 if it's on the agenda for this time.
Usually, if it's on the early session, we take comments when we're discussing the item. Because it's public comments. There's public comments on items not on the agenda. You know, the 7:30 public comments.
So, what's the will of the council, then, as far as this goes? I don't want to.
Did the city instruct them?
Cut anybody off, of course, but.
No, that was me personally.
Oh.
I don't have a problem deferring the item over until 7:30.
Do we have people here?
We have one. We have one individual. Certainly, like this individual that's here, to hear from him, so he potentially will not have to come back to the 7:30 if he so wishes. Yeah, he's here. Do you want to bring him up now? Yeah, why don't you come up now, Chris? And if you wouldn't mind just stating your name, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name is Chris Johnston. I serve our community as the Assistant Superintendent for Pleasant Valley School District, and I'm here to say thank you to city staff and the City Council for considering this important safety matter for our community. So, thank you, and if I may weigh in on a question that Mrs. Craven posed earlier in the evening, we anticipate school to start the last week of August, ma'am.
Well, after the 13th.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Now, Chris, will you be here at the 7:30, or will this be pretty much where you're, the only time you're able to make it?
I will need to leave due to a family commitment. I apologize.
Okay, so you're, you know, you're on the record, so we'll take that accordingly. Mr. Consul, yes?
I just wanted to mention, in our presentation, we would be referencing discussions and meetings that staff has had with the Pleasant Valley School District, including Mr. Johnston, and I am confident he would confirm that, that those did occur, and that, you know, that would have been part of his and my comments during the item, so I just wanted to mention that, with him here, that confirming that we have had, and he was attending at the Streets and Transportation Committee meeting, so Pleasant Valley School District, Rancho Rosales staff has been involved in this item.
Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor, could you just ask if there's anybody by a show of hands to let us know if there are other people in the audience who are here for this item, even if they didn't fill out a speakers call?
Sure. Is anybody here for this item? No. Okay, now, we have a pretty packed agenda on the 7:30, so to bring this back up, we're going to have to put this at the very end. So, all right, so we'll hold that over. All right, let's get down to community development. It's Casa de Sueno, Casa Velazquez's rental properties, resolution approving a ground lease extension. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kildy. Oksana Buck will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kildy and council members. Casa Velazquez and Casas de Sueno are two rental properties in Camarillo. They consist of duplexes, triplexes, and single-family units that are located on several different sites, and both of these projects were built and owned by the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation since the 1990s, but the land is owned by the city and is being leased to Cabrillo. This is an aerial view of the two projects. Casa de Sueno is outlined in white, and Casa Velazquez is outlined in blue. On July 27, 1994, the city in Cabrillo has entered into a ground lease and development agreement to construct 13 very low-income units on two adjacent city-owned properties. The project consists of five duplexes, one triplex, and it has two three- and four-bedroom units. It was built in 1995, and the existing lease term is for 55 years, began in 1994, and it expires in 2049. On May 27, 1998, the city in Cabrillo entered into another ground lease and development agreement to build 10 affordable units, five of which. agreement to build 10 affordable units, five of which are very low-income and five are low-income, and those are located on four scattered sites. This project does have an 11th unit, but it's being used as a leasing office and a community room. The project has two duplexes and single family, six single-family units, with a mix of two and three-bedroom units. It was constructed in 2000, and it has a land lease term for 55 years, which began in 1998 and expires in 2053. In August 2017, Cabrillo notified the city of intent to sell both properties and requested an extension of the existing land leases to 99 years. And Cabrillo is currently in escrow to sell the properties and has also requested an assignment of interest to the buyer, which is the area housing authority of the county of Ventura.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I should have announced earlier that I have properties that are close to the bookends on Daily Drive at Mobile and at Ramire Street, and I, I will, I haven't said anything, so, but I do need to leave.
Upon city, city council approval of ground lease extensions, the 99-year term would begin after the close of escrow and would expire in the year 2117. Staff reviewed this request and recommends approval because it would, this extension would provide affordability restrictions on the 23 units for over 60 years beyond the existing terms. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution authorizing assignment and assumption and Second Amendment to ground lease and agreement regarding construction and management of improvements for Casa de Sueno and Casa Velazquez rental properties. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions at this particular point? No? No? Okay. All right. They will remain, one question, Joe, they will remain as rental units, is that correct?
Yes, and the affordability terms will all be preserved.
And I have to say that they've been very well maintained.
We agree.
Very, they've done a very good job, and I would strongly suggest, and certainly my experience and my, my hope is that they'll remain very well maintained like they have in the past, because that's a, it's been a real sense of pride.
Yes, it's been a good asset for our community.
Motion, anybody?
I'll motion to adopt the suggested action of staff.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes 4-1 with Mrs. Craven. I'm not able to participate. Okay, so we'll wait for Mrs., oh, there she is. Okay, we're down to item nine. It's a city manager's an appointment to the Recreational Facilities Needs Assessment Ad Hoc Committee, and what has happened?
Mr. Mayor, I believe you skipped over the city attorney's item.
Yep.
The item before it.
I certainly did. Boy, I'm just trying to fly through this, aren't I? Okay, Mr. City Attorney, how could I, how could I over, not realize that you're here, Mr. City Attorney?
Apologies accepted, Mayor Kildy.
Okay.
Good evening, council members.
Thank you, Don.
We do have legislative action this evening.
Do you want to just announce your name, if you would, Don?
Yes, Don Davis, Assistant City Attorney. The item before you this evening is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending and restating Chapter 5.36 of the city's municipal code regarding taxi cabs. This was something that was necessitated by two bills that passed in the last two legislative sessions, completely changing the landscape for taxi cab regulations, which under state law, we are required to actually have an ordinance in place regulating taxi cabs. And the purpose behind the state legislation was essentially to bring a level of uniformity to different jurisdictions, regulating taxi cabs and specifying precisely how, what subject areas need to be regulated, but not always the specific. So I'm not sure how much uniformity you get out of that kind of scheme, but nevertheless, we have to make the changes, and that's what's before you. Because this has been subject to two of our study sessions and a policy committee review, I did not include in here, but for the public, I'll briefly mention that we are only regulating here taxi cabs. We are not regulating the Ubers and the Lifts and whoever else has come along in the ride-sharing services. Those are regulated by the state. They're considered something called transportation network companies, and those industries were able to claim that they are different from taxi cabs because they rely on a technology platform in the form of their ride-sharing app, even though functionally, they would appear to do the same thing that taxi cabs do. But because it's regulated on the state level under the Public Utilities Code, and the regulations are frankly fairly minimal, they are, there's some insurance requirements, there are background checks, but they're not the kind of extensive vehicle inspections and other things that we have in our ordinance. But because the state has occupied that field, we're preempted from regulating them. All this we can do is that our finance director can collect a business license from a driver if they are domiciled in the city. So if they're, you know, their place of business or residence is in the city, and they are an Uber driver, technically, they are required to have a business tax certificate from the city. But turning back to taxi cabs that we're regulating, in the agenda report, I outline the number of areas that were required to regulate, which is why we are completely amending and restating this. There are permit requirements for both the companies and the drivers with extensive application requirements, including a new requirement for controlled substance testing at the time of application and the time of the annual license renewals, regulations regarding how fares must be posted, disclosed, use of a regulated meter, insurance requirements, participation in the state's pull notice program, that if a driver is convicted of some kind of crime, that they lose their license, that the company gets notified of that. There are a number of safety and educational training requirements. I think most importantly, for vehicle safety, we do have a vehicle inspection requirement where people will have to go to a certified facility to have the vehicles inspected and have that updated annually to ensure the proper condition of the vehicles. What, one of the areas that's changed, too, in regulations, is that we can't just regulate a business like we typically do in our licensing, if they are doing business in the city. Any kind of, you know, contractor comes here and they, you know, do a couple of projects, they are potentially subject to our regulations, our business licensing requirements. With taxi cabs, one of the things the state did was to say that going forward, beginning in January of 2019, you can only regulate a company that's substantially located in your jurisdiction. So that means their place of business is here, or the majority of trips are here. Once they identify where that location is and they get a permit from our city, then they could work in any other city, and the other cities or the county itself here in Ventura cannot regulate them. There'll only be one permit requirement going forward for companies, so that, that also is a shift. We believe, based on, you know, our, our knowledge of who's out there and who's been doing business and business tax certificates, that we probably only have two or three businesses that are going to meet that test. But nevertheless, we need to go forward with our ordinance. So our recommendation is this evening that you introduce the ordinance for a first reading, and if you have any further questions about any of the details, I would be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Davis, at this time?
I have one.
And Mr. Mulchey?
How do they establish that there, that a majority of taxi cabs' trips occurred in, say, our jurisdiction?
Good, good question. There's actually a data collection requirement now. So initially, they'll start with the place of business. So if their place of business is Camrio, that, that's a no-brainer for the first year. After that, during the renewals, they actually have to start collecting data that they're going to have to share and show that, okay, 65% of my trips are in Camrio, 20 in Thousand Oak, or vice versa. Or if they start doing more somewhere else, they may fall outside of our jurisdiction and then have to go to, you know, another city to get their permit based on that data. So it's kind of a burden on them. Precisely how that's going to work, we'll, we'll see, because it's new regulation. So they're going to have to present some kind of data that will be acceptable to us to show that, you know, here's where our trips were.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Don, I have a, a couple. So this is a new state regulation, if it is not, and if that is the case, do you look for some amendments in the future with this, or do you think that this will be what it is, or can we always expect amendments from the state?
Well, that's a loaded question.
Not to put you on the spot.
So I'll, I'll tell you what I know. Let, let's hope that there's a pause here, Mayor Kildy, because there were actually two, two state law changes that, that triggered this. One was in 2017, and we started to update our ordinance then, but then we saw, oh, they're doing it again, they just can't get enough in Sacramento of taxi cabs, and then came out with even more. So we kind of held back, and I think they kind of worked the bugs out in the second go around, but, you know, and I think our, our scheme is comprehensive enough that I think in the future, there'll probably be more minor tweaks. Maybe the issue of the data collection, maybe there's some way to, you know, do that better that goes forward. But I do hope that the laboring war has been pulled at, at this time, that we have a comprehensive scheme. We tried to, we looked at, Thousand Oaks has already done their update, and we modeled a lot after theirs, because it's useful for businesses to have some consistency, too, and they, they had a good, you know, foundation, so we used a lot of what theirs has as well. So again, hopefully, none of us in the county will have to go through this, at least for a while, would be my hope.
All right. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I'll request a reading of the title.
Yes, this is ordinance number 1160, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camrio, California, amending and restating Chapter 5.36, taxi cab permits of Title V, Business Tax Certificates and Permitting Procedures of the Camrio Municipal Code.
Moved to waive further reading of the ordinance and introduce.
A second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. All right, so now we get down to the city manager. It's the appointment to the Recreational Facilities Needs Assessment Ad Hoc Committee, and with the departure of Mrs. McDonald, it is necessary to appoint another council member to serve along with Vice Mayor Tony Tremblay, and my recommendation is that we appoint Charlotte Craven for this. Is there any discussion on this? It is, well, the main thing is to build the new recreational facilities for the community. Tremblay, do you have anything else to add on that, or is that, yes? So my recommendation is to appoint Mrs. Craven for this.
It's to figure out how to build, not necessarily for us to build. I just want to make sure it's clear.
The assessment of this.
I will accept it if you decide I should be on the committee.
All right. Councillor, do we need to vote on this? Is it an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, I don't know. I guess technically not, but since it's on the agenda, I think it would be advisable to do that.
So we'll need a motion on Mrs. Craven. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Please vote. All right, it passes 5-0. Thank you, Mrs. Craven, for your willingness to serve on this very important ad hoc committee. Okay, we're going to get down to item B. It's a resolution amending the compensation classification and benefits programs to authorize the position of the Community Relations Officer, and I will ask Mr. Mulchey if he would reopen the Sand District, please.
I'll reconvene the meeting in the Camrio Sanitary District.
All right. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Norman, please.
The council, the city council goals for fiscal year 2018 and 19 include the goal of increasing community engagement and effective communication with the community, and an objective to explore the development of a community engagement specialist for the, engagement specialist position for the city. In order to fulfill this goal and objective, the proposed resolutions amend the compensation classification and benefits program for city and CSD employees by adding the position of Community Relations Officer. This position will perform professional and technical communications necessary to deliver accurate, timely, and cohesive information to the public over a variety of public communications platforms, in accordance with city council policy and under the general direction of the city manager. The Community Relations Officer will be primarily responsible for developing and implementing a comprehensive, city council-approved, communication strategy for the city, and ensuring that messaging is consistent and cohesive across the city's many communication platforms, including the city's website, Facebook page, news releases, City Scene Newsletter, City Scene TV, television government channel, utility billing, City Hall Marquee, and other communications platforms and media that may be employed in the future. The Community Relations Officer will also respond to inquiries from the media and general public, identify spokespersons and coordinate responses, and track media coverage. In times of emergency, the Community Relations Officer will serve as the city's Public Information Officer in the EOC. The Community Relations Officer will be expected to have a good understanding of the city's operations and the city's many projects and issues. They must be able to research and understand complex issues and articulate the city's interest in such issues over a broad range of communication platforms in a manner understandable to the community. Adoption of the proposed resolutions is necessary to amend the compensation classification and benefits program to include the Community Relationship, Relations Officer position at Band 189 of the salary plan. The total annual cost of salary and benefits at the band midpoint for this position is That concludes staff's reports.
Any questions of staff at this time? Mr. Mulchey, do you have a question, please?
Yeah, can we briefly go over how this is, is it currently administered? A lot of these tasks and responsibilities that would fall under this new position? Is it fair to say that they're, they're rather, it's kind of scattered about right now?
Yes, currently, there are several staff members handling these many different platforms. For example, the City Scene Newsletter is compiled and, and edited by Roger Pichardo in my office. Also in my office, John Frazier does the City Scene TV and the government channel work. For the city's website, departments provide content to the website. So bringing all those messages together and coordinating those messages is something we've, it's fallen to me, and it's, it really needs someone's direct attention on, on a consistent basis.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one question, Mr. Norman. Is there anybody on staff here that could do this, or will you be going out for an RFP?
Well, typically, we'd go out for recruitment. I anticipate, I'll be evaluating that, and then pulling together recruitment strategy as necessary.
Do you expect a lot of interest in this position?
Yes, quite possibly.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? All right, let's go down to comments. Anybody have a comment that they want to start off with? Ms. Craven?
We discussed this at the goal-setting session, I think, and we also discussed it at budget time, and I think it's very much needed. I think all of our information needs to come from one place, and there needs to be one contact for, for information. That person may not know, may have to go to other places to get it, but at least it'll be one voice that's representing the city and all the dealings with the media and, and other sources of questions, or other sources that just need information. So I think it's, it's very good.
Can I ask one more question, before I forgot to ask a question? Mr. Norman, with this position, are you expecting a very high-quality person to apply for this?
I expect all people applying for jobs for the city of Camrio to be high-quality applicants. Yes.
Okay, so we've got comments. Mr. Mulchey, do you have a comment?
Sure. I just want to echo what Mrs. Craven had said. I can, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I think we live in a new day and age where we need to consolidate the communication and its source. and its source, and we need a coordinated message, and we live in the information age. And, you know, people nowadays get their information through a multitude of different channels, and making sure that we can deliver consistent and quality and correct information to the populace, to the voters, to the people we serve is vital. So I would have to support this.
Mr. Tremblay, did you have any?
No, I'm right there with Mrs. Craven and Mr. Mulchay. I am really happy to see this. I've been advocating for a long time for this step, I think since I first came to the council, because it will significantly, in my view, assist our outreach to the community, particularly in electronic media applications. It is absolutely consistent with our council goals and objectives, and I'm delighted that we're going to take this step and fully support it.
One other question, Mr. Norman. I mean to put you on the spot, but how long do you think this is going to take from start to finish on this, being if it does pass?
You're speaking of the hiring?
Yes.
That really depends on the type of recruitment I decide to do on this, after evaluating resources available.
Okay, reasonable amount of time.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Are there any other comments? I'm sorry, Mrs., I'm sorry, Susan, did you have a comment, please?
I echo what everybody said. I just, I want to remind everybody that all we are, we are in the electronic age. There is still a good amount of the population that is not able, whether because of, you know, just their comfort level, or perhaps their home economics that, so I'm hoping that the community engagement aspect is not just focused on the electronic aspect of it.
Absolutely not. We do still employ a broad spectrum of communication channels that will continue. We're not anticipating dropping any of those channels. And you're correct. I mean, we have a wide spectrum of, a wide demographic here, that, from everything, from, you know, millennials and younger who were brought up with cell phones, some born with cell phones in their hands, and others who weren't. And so we all, we need to make a good effort at being able to reach all these demographics in a channel where they're comfortable.
Any other comments? Mr. Tremblay?
No. Great to make a motion.
Proceed, please.
I move that the council adopt a resolution amending the Compensation, Classification, and Benefits Program by adding the classification for a full-time Community Relations Officer and appropriate $75,000 to fund the position and related benefits from the general fund unassigned fund balance.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. All right, so I think we've got some time to do.
I think I need to go over, oh, I'm sorry. Proceed. Sorry, and on the Camrio Sanitation District side, is there a motion to approve staff's recommendation?
So move.
Second.
Please vote. It passes unanimously. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Camrio Sanitation District.
Okay, so we have, I believe we've got about seven minutes. Is that going to be enough time to do the new business oral communication? I kind of think we can probably do it. So Mr. City Manager, do you have anything tonight for us?
No, nothing tonight.
Mr. City Attorney, anything tonight for us?
I have no items.
All right, so we'll move down to the city council. Ms. Santangelo, do you have anything tonight you'd like to share with us?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Craven, anything tonight?
Oh, I've attended so many meetings since we met for business two weeks ago. These are not in date order, but the date, the order that I wrote them down. This afternoon, I attended a finance and, meetings of the Finance and Investment Committees, and the Finance Committee also sits as the city's Audit Committee under our policy. You received the auditor's report earlier. On December 4th, I attended an RDP 21 meeting, and I attended the Installation Meeting of the Board of Realtors for the city. On December 5th, I attended an all-afternoon Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting. On December 7th, I went to Sacramento for the day to the CASA, the California Association of Sanitation Agencies Federal Legislation Committee. I attended one ribbon cut at the Gelato Store down by Mr. Kildee's store. So he is now between a candy shop and a gelato shop. You're going to be, there's a tradition, you know, that every mayor has to gain five pounds. You're going to have a hard time keeping it to five pounds, being where you are.
Right, gee, who knew, huh?
I also, on a couple of Friday nights ago, I attended a fundraiser by, sponsored by the Camrio Chamber of Commerce called Camrio Cares, and it was a fundraiser for the employees, former employees, and the victims of the borderline. And I think Lily and Bruce did a wonderful job of putting that together in a fairly short time. I also attended farewells for departing council member Glenn Becerra in Simi Valley, who had been there 20 years and didn't run again, and for John Sharkey in Port Wainimi, who had been there for 24 years and didn't run again. So I had a busy couple of weeks.
Good. All right, thank you. Mr. Mulchay, do you have anything tonight for us?
No, seeing that I'm the new kid, one of the new kids on the block, in the last, I've only had about a week under my belt, and it's been a good week and a busy week. Enjoyed the Christmas parade on Saturday. That was terrific, going and seeing all the people. Also on Saturday, I attended the Tree of Life event, put on by Livingston, and that was, it was moving. They passed the microphone around, and they each named an individual and/or multiple individuals that they had, they had lost. And then otherwise, that was pretty much it. I did have a question of staff, if that was, if it's appropriate to ask at this time.
Sure, proceed.
For our Public Works Director. Only being in it for a week, I'm already starting to get emails and questions and phone calls from people. I did get one, and that was last Friday, and it was a gentleman off Kendall Avenue. He was complaining about a rotten egg smell. He said it was, it was kind of permeating into his house. He thinks it was coming up from his drains or something. He said he noticed some city employees or, and/or contractors outside, and they appear to be cleaning the sewer. Is that, is that typical in, as we flush the systems? And how often do we flush the systems? Can you go over that a little bit?
Sure. No, it is relatively uncommon that we get those complaints, not saying that we don't get them. And what is occurring, as you mentioned, the city or Camrio Sanitary District staff on a routine basis is out cleaning, and then preparation, not only to clean the sewer lines, but then to video inspect. Each sewer pipeline in the city receives that cleaning and inspection roughly every four years, roughly do a quarter of the city every year. And again, that's within the city camps and service area, obviously. The, just for clarification, the eastern portion of the city is under Camarosa jurisdiction. So we're talking about Camrio Sanitary District customer service area. So that's part of our sanitary sewer management plan, effort to inspect, clean, and maintain our sewer system in top-notch condition. Any defects or issues identified during inspection are noted, and typically what we'll do is compile those into future projects that will go and treat the problem areas kind of all together in one project. As that cleaning operation is going on, it's a high-pressure nozzle essentially that goes down the pipeline from manhole to manhole. And there are times when, depending on the amount of flow in the sewer, if there's any existing blockages, there could be the case where air gets forced up, what we call the lateral, to the customers' residence. And if enough air ends up going up the lateral, it could displace the water trap that's in place in all fixtures. So that's required by code, is a water trap at each sewer connection point within the house. So that's often what's happening, is that, and it could happen more in one place than the other. If a, if a trap, for some reason, doesn't get used very frequently, and especially under low humidity conditions, there can be evaporation, causing a trap to be more susceptible to air getting in there and causing a loss of that water. And then that, it's hydrogen sulfide, the gas smell, the rotten egg smell.
Smell.
That will then escape. And again, it varies. Some sewer lines have very minimal gas and smell to it. There are other locations, it just depends on the slope of the pipeline, the size, the amount of flow, the topography of the area. We do have areas that are more susceptible to the, to the gas collection. So there are locations that may experience it more frequently than others. So that's what was experienced there. And again, it's relatively infrequent. We do get complaints here and again, and when a customer contacts us, the simple solution is to run some water in the fixture, whether it's a sink or the toilet, reestablish that water trap barrier, and that pretty well takes care of it.
Should they open a window, ventilate then, too?
Yeah, there's, you know, in the amount of volume that we're talking about, it's relatively harmless, just that it smells very bad. So yeah, definitely aerating, ventilating area is helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay?
Let me try and speed through this if I can. In terms of meetings, on December 2, I represented Mayor Craven on the Hanukkah menorah lighting in Constitution Park by the Habad, Jewish Center of Camrio, and Rabbi Lang, as always, is wonderful. December 3, we had a policy committee meeting where we discussed taxi cab, the same taxi cab ordinance we adopted this evening, sidewalk vending and OPEB, I believe. On December 5, Clean Power Alliance Finance Committee. On December 7, Sheriff Dean's Retirement Celebration. On December 8, the Christmas parade, which all of us attended, which was really fun. The Livingston Light Up a Life at Constitution Park, and Ms. Santangelo, as well as Mr. Mulchay and myself, were all there, which is great. We had our city employee recognition dinner on Saturday evening, the 8th, and I want to shout out, or a big shout out, thank you, to city staff who were responsible for putting that on. That was really fun, and it would take too long to go through the names, but it was a very fun event, and so thank you. December 11, the EDC Executive Committee, and also attended the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Open House. And then finally, today, before the meeting, I had the trifecta, which was the Investment Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Audit Committee, all rolled into one with Mrs. Craven. And that is it in terms of meetings, and that concludes my report.
All right. I did attend a VRSD meeting. It's kind of interesting, we've had four directors on VRSD cycling off. Mr. Monahan, Mr. Sharkey, Mr. Price, and Jack Curtis, who's a special district rep. So it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, a really different board.
You have, what, nine members?
I'm sorry?
You have nine members?
Yes, we have nine. I did attend the Chamber of Commerce tree lighting ceremony, and I believe Mr. Mulchay was there. I believe Ms. Santangelo, I think you were there as well. I did also attend a lighting of the menorah with Rabbi Lang last Thursday at the Camrio outlets. So that was, that was very, very cold out there, but it's a very, very moving celebration. I did attend the Christmas parade along with the other council members, and our wonderful employees' recognition dinner, which was very well-attended and a very, very great event, too. I also want to thank all the council members for helping me out on this busy month for me. I appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule and representing the city. Very much appreciated. Okay, so with that, Counselor, would you like to, in case we do have some time, to see if you want to announce what the closed-session items are?
Yes, we have two closed-session items this evening. One is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5, 4956.9D2. The number of cases is one. And then there's a real property item, the former fire station on Ventura Boulevard. The agency negotiators and negotiating parties are identified in the agenda. Under negotiation, our price and terms of payment.
Okay, so with that, we will go to the study session.
Before we recess this session, I would like to review with the council and the audience what the, the schedule of proceedings for the remaining items will be this, this evening, since we have possibly several people coming for different items. What I anticipate is that we will take the first study session, our Neil Road Mixed Use Project at, this will be our first study session here at 6:00. Then we will go into our first closed session. And then if we have time after that closed session, we'll come back for pedestrian safety on Ventura Boulevard. And then I anticipate that we'll be going back to open session again, and we will handle, I would suggest handling the Springville item that's listed in the agenda for A, and then after that, the Crosswalk Village at the Park, and then finally, the last study session for concerts in the park.
All right, everybody have that? Okay, with that, we're in recess.
Thank you.
City Council meeting to order, please, and we'll do a flag salute. Mrs. Craven, would you lead us in a flag salute?
Please rise, place your hand, roll your heart, and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any amendments to the agenda, this part of it?
No amendments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a presentation tonight. First is the Friends of the Camrio Library. We'll present the city a check, so I'm going to ask the representatives to come over here to my right. That's great. Look at you. Look at you. Wow. Yeah, you look great.
Did you hear that?
Dude, you look great.
He's a flatterer, Val.
All right, so we have the members of the Friends of the Camrio Library here, and very graciously, they presented us a number of checks through the years, and we really appreciate that. Three? $3 million total over a period of time, which is really terrific. And I know that these individuals are all volunteers, and we really appreciate all of you for what you do for our library. As was said earlier, we think we have the finest library in the county, and it's no small saying that you folks and your organization has a lot to do with that, too. So what happens, I have the plaque here, and then when we get the amount, it'll be scribed on this, and it'll be displayed in our city council area here. So without any further ado, do you have a spokesperson that would like to? That would be you, and I will let you do your due diligence. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Felicia Gayworth, President of the Friends of the Camrio Library. For anyone here this evening who is unfamiliar with us, we're a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to funding the Camrio Library. We're also an all-volunteer organization with over 90 volunteers, ranging in age from the early 20s to their early 90s. And I'm not understating things to say that we're an industrious group. And we call ourselves Friends, not only because it's an abbreviation to our proper title, but also because that's who we are. We're a large group of friends who get together to help our community. This year, we've also funded over $26,000 for library community programs and events. So altogether, for our 2017, 2018 fiscal year, we will have contributed over $240,000, which has been our best year in several years. So on behalf of my esteemed board members, our dedicated volunteers, and our most generous donors and members, I am thrilled to present a check for $215,000 to the city of Camrio for our beautiful Camrio Library.
I know it's a little bit out of protocol, but can I hand this microphone? Can each one of you announce your name, please? I think it's really important. I think it's really important for the public knows who you are and what you do.
Uh, I'm Fred Penny, immediate past president.
I'm Dorothy Penny, I'm the Vice President.
I'm Maureen Camino.
She's the Social Secretary, but she's too shy to say it.
I'm Kim Petrazelli, and I'm the Webmaster.
I'm Jolene Warren, and I'm not on the Board, but I love to read, and I've been volunteering for about six years. Lived in Camrio since 1965. I bring all my friends to see the library.
I'm Joan Adams, and I'm Secretary on the Board.
I'm Carol Lambert, and I'm a volunteer. I've been a volunteer for about 20 years.
Sue Gary, I'm a Board Member.
Joanne Isaacson.
I'm Val Rains, and I'm the Parliamentarian that keeps them all in order.
Thank you so much, what a great group, and we really, really appreciate what you've done over the years for the City of Camrio. Comments, uh, any council members before we take some pictures? Ms. Craven?
Oh, I always appreciate the Friends of the Library. You have been so helpful, and you're so diligent, and you're always there with the bookstore open, which is where you raise your money. Uh, and we appreciate all the volunteer hours that all of you people put in.
Mr. Tremblay?
I'm just consistently blown away, literally blown away, uh, figuratively, I guess, by your level of effort. Um, it is unmatched, and I appreciate it so much. And my favorite part of walking into the Friends of the Library store, of course, is immediately when I walk into the front doors, as I told Fred the other night, I immediately take a quick right and go right to the, sorry, gender comment, man section, right there, and, and look for the books there. So, thank you sincerely for all of your efforts.
Anyone else? Mr. Mulchay?
I too would like to thank you and the terrific support you give to our library. Um, it truly is the finest library, and it's the finest library because of the people that support it and the people that are behind it. So thank you very much.
Ms. Santangelo?
I too would like to thank you, especially for making, uh, my first meeting, um, just so great to see so much money. Um, that's just an amazing amount, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Do we like to take a little picture now?
I want a big picture, it's a big check.
I'm going to, he just said, keep it short. I received an email from Canada, uh, from my daughter's brother-in-law, who saw a program, and I can't remember what the name is, is a man that does, um, picture, does articles and, and, and programs on different things in the United States. And he featured the city council, the Camrio City Council, that there had been an actor here who was...
Prince.
Yeah, who, who presented himself, and he announced he was an actor doing this thing. Unfortunately, they also had a clip of some of us Board Members that were previously presenting a check act, and labeling us as acting. This is no act.
Well, that actor was Prince. He called himself Prince. I called him Prince Charming, but he called, said his name was Prince. That's what he said.
All right. Next, we have a U.S. Small Business Administrative, uh, Administration Disaster Assistance. We have a Cory D. Williams here. Is Cory here? Welcome Cory, and, uh, yeah, I have the microphone on for you.
And there's the clip, okay. So this is the one to, oh, perfect. Well, good evening, thank you so much, Mayor and council members, and I had the pleasure of meeting, uh, City Manager Norman at the Camrio Chamber of Commerce meeting, I think last Wednesday, so, and he invited me to come and speak. Um, on behalf of the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance, my name is Cory Williams, I'm a Public Information Officer, and I also have my fellow Public Information Officer, who is our bilingual specialist, Rego, oh, Rego, Rego, uh, here. So I just wanted to make sure to give you an overview of the program. Rego and, uh, myself, um, actually are here for the second time here in Ventura County. We worked the Thomas Fire, um, earlier this year, and now coming back here for the Hill and Woolsey Fire. Unfortunately, you know, this seems like Ventura County's been hit really hard this past year, so I wanted to really give an overview about the program, because a lot of people, when they think of disaster assistance, they think FEMA is gonna come to save the day, and they don't know the programs that the U.S. Small Business Administration offers. So we'll start with the presentation again. Uh, my name is Cory Williams, and our office is actually based out of Sacramento, California. We have our Field Operations Center West, which covers everything west of the Mississippi, and then we have our Field Operation, and that's based in Sacramento. Then we have our Field Operations Center East, based in Atlanta, and they cover everything on the eastern side. And I actually flew in on November 13th from Hurricane Florence in, uh, North Carolina. So SBA's role in disaster recovery, so after SBA disaster declaration, um, whether it's for hurricane, flood, tornadoes, earthquakes, or in this case wildfires, SBA disaster loans are the primary source of federal assistance to help private, not only businesses of all sizes, but also homeowners, renters, and nonprofits get back on their feet during times of disaster. So we offer low-interest disaster assistance loans to businesses of all sizes, private nonprofits, homeowners and renters. Now, mostly when they think of FEMA, FEMA does offer grant assistance. However, that is a very limited amount of assistance. The maximum grant actually is $34,000. Most people, you know, FEMA doesn't really put that out there, but for a California homeowner that in Ventura County, they may have lost their entire home, $34,000 is not gonna make them whole. So that's the reason why we are here, to be that long-term disaster recovery partner for any homeowner or renter that may have lost their home or been affected by their business. So again, our mission is to provide low-interest loans to businesses of all sizes, homeowners, renters, to, um, make, basically, put them back in the position where they were the day before these devastating wildfires hit. And of course, with the Thomas Fire happening earlier this year, and then also now with the Hill-Woolsey Fire, you have to keep in mind that a number of businesses sustained a lot of economic injury, and just as they were starting to turn, maybe like in August or September, trying to see in some, maybe kind of getting back on their feet, here comes the Hill and Woolsey Fire, and now they're almost back started, back over again. And I did a presentation at the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce, I think last Thursday, and i- it was a call that just, just touched my heart. They, it was a tourist from Oklahoma that called the chamber, and they accidentally called, and they were just saying, is California open? And, you know, 'cause you see a lot of the media sensationalize, and one of the pictures they saw was on the Santa Monica Pier, they had the fire in the background, and they really, they really asked, well, you know, is California, is it safe to travel to California? So because of that, you think about the businesses in Ventura County now that have been impacted not only by the Thomas Fire, the Hill Fire, the Woolsey Fire. You have a lot of people that affects, it's kind of like that trickle-down effect. You think about the hotel industry, you know, less hoteliers are having rooms available. Then that trickles down to the restaurants, then it trickles down to the tourist shops. And now, you know, we're in the Christmas season, and this is the second time, you know, December 4th, 2017 is when the Thomas Fire hit, and now here we are, what, November the 6th, I believe, um, is when the Hill and Woolsey Fire has hit. So within one calendar year, you had two major presidential disaster declarations. So again, with the Presidential Declaration, again, President Trump declared this on November the 12th, um, and I actually flew in again on, from Hurricane Florence. So when the President declares a major declaration for what they call IA, so it's two types of assistance, you have individual assistance, and you have public assistance. Now, when you're dealing with the city and the counties, that's, that help to the municipalities is what's called public assistance. Now, when President Trump actually allowed for individual assistance, that allows individual assistance to the homeowners, renters, business owners, and nonprofits that were affected by this declaration. So again, I already kind of covered the PA, so that, um, that, that's more for the essential services of the government nature. And also, we have what's called our smaller disasters, when it's not declared by the President, um, when we have like, where it's a number, it's, for us, it has to be 25 or more majors, and then our Administrator, Lynda McMahon, will actually act on her own power to actually just declare a particular incident. But this case here, this is a Presidential Declaration by President Trump. Now, for disaster loan programs, the biggest thing that I want to emphasize for Camrio business owners, because thankfully, it didn't really impact as much homeowners or renters in the Camrio area, but a number of business owners will sustain what's considered economic injury. And when I say economic injury, you're thinking about loss of sales, any kind of loss in revenue. You know, there were, for three or four days, there may have been mandatory evacuations. When you think about that small business owner here in Camrio, who may, let's say, average $5,000 of revenue a day. So for four days, that's a $20,000 loss. And so for most small businesses, that's not an easy thing to get back. That's why it's so important to make sure to have working capital for those business owners to provide, to kind of sustain themselves throughout this recovery period. Now, some recovery periods can be up to three months, some up to six months, and I was telling, uh, City Manager Norman, that I actually worked Hurricane Harvey last year, and there were some businesses that they said it might take up to five years to recover. So the one thing we want to make sure is to inform all Camrio business owners, if they start seeing signs, if they have to lay off an employee, if they notice a drop in sales, those are usually signs of economic injury. And the best time to attack, you know, the economic injury is when you actually start seeing just the little signs. Now, the deadline actually to apply for economic injury is nine months, because we know that it takes a little bit longer to really be able to assess economic injury, because, you know, physical injury, you can see. You can see the, your roof's burned, your inventory's damaged, you can see those things. I always say, your physical things are the things you can touch, but the economic injury, those are the things you really just don't see. You know, uh, we just had Black Friday, I'm sure there were some businesses in Camrio that's, that probably did maybe, let's say, bef, you know, because last, last year bef, this was before the Thomas Fire, let's say they may have done $50,000 on Black Friday. Well, this Black Friday, let's say they only did $25,000. You know, well, that's a $25,000 hit. You think, you know, and even in the smallest terms, $25,000 for a small business owner is very, very critical to keep their business operational. That's why I really emphasize the economic injury working loans, um, or economic injury disaster loans. Now, again, we are not just for small businesses. We do help out homeowners, renters, um, nonprofits. Now, for our loans, um, business owners are actually able to borrow up to $2 million to repair, replace disaster-damaged real estate, any kind of business assets, and, which would include any kind of working capital as well. Now, the interest rates for our business loans is as low as 3.74%, no cost to apply, and all of our loans carry a one-year deferment. So for that Camrio business owner that may even need just up to $25,000 for working capital to know that they don't have to make a payment until January or February of next year, could give that business that boost that they need to kind of keep themselves going throughout this recovery period. So again, that's the economic injury loans, and again, the big thing we want to do is make recovery affordable. Low interest rates, long terms, loans can be amortized up to 30 years, and we also can refinance prior debts in some cases. Now, for our homeowners, homeowners are actually able to borrow up to $200,000 to repair, replace disaster-damaged real estate, and up to $40,000 to repair, replace disaster-damaged personal property, which would include any vehicles. Also, homeowners that had, you know, lost their entire home, they're also eligible for what we call mitigation funds. So, you know, if you're gonna have to rebuild, you want to rebuild stronger. So maybe, you know, some fireproof insulation, or creating more defensible space, those are mitigative measures that can safeguard the home from future harm. So through this process, we, we want to make sure that any Ventura County resident that was affected can take advantage of our programs. Again, the interest rates are stated here for home loans as low as 2%. Again, one-year deferment, whether you're a business, homeowner, renter, nonprofit, um, businesses as low as 3.74%, and nonprofits fixed at 2.75%. Again, I can't emphasize that enough for a business to have that one-year deferment period. We already covered the loan thresholds here, and we do look at, um, you know, different credit history and also repayment ability, but the one thing is, when you think about traditional SBA versus the Office of Disaster Assistance, traditional SBA, all the loans are actually funded by banks, but guaranteed by SBA. With the Office of Disaster Assistance, these are our federal taxpayer dollars at work. So all of our loans are directly funded by the U.S. Treasury. That's what allows the amortization up to 30 years, and the flexible repayment, and also the deferment periods. 30 years, again, max payment, and then, the big thing again that I always emphasize is for any business owner who had even the minimal loss in Ventura County, whether they are in Camrio, and they just need just a little bit of working capital, they can borrow up to $25,000 without pledging any collateral at all for their economic injury, and then up to $25,000 for their physical loss without pledging any collateral. So that business that may have had some physical damage can actually borrow up to $50,000 unsecured with a one-year deferment, no closing costs, you know, to be able to help them get back on their feet. Uh, we want, and then, of course, we do look at insu, we do require insurance in some cases, especially if it is a secured loan, and, you know, like I say, but the big thing that we always state is that the first step in the disaster recovery process is to register with FEMA. That's to go to disasterassistance.gov. Again, that's, that's when you register with FEMA, but then if you are referred to SBA, whether you want or need a loan, we encourage everybody to go ahead and put in the application. So the one thing that I would really like to make sure that, you know, that I leave here today is that, you know, we know that it wasn't as much damage for the businesses, homeowners, you know, thankfully in Camrio, but for those, those businesses in Camrio that may have suffered that economic injury, I encourage you to pass that information, to take advantage of our Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, where they can borrow even up to $25,000 with no closing costs and up to a one-year deferment. And we do have our Disaster Recovery Center open in Thousand Oaks, it's actually in the Jan's Marketplace, and their hours are from nine, um, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And, of course, they can always mail an application or apply online by going to disasterloan.sba.gov. So that pretty much is the main role, and I'll just leave it up to questions from here. I just want to make sure to give you a good overview of our program.
Thank you Cory, very informative. Any questions from anybody? All right, very good information. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Appreciate it. All right, so that gets us down to public comments. Got a couple of public comments here. All right, I'm gonna call them up, uh, as I was, uh, as they were submitted to me, Matt Lorimer. And Matt, I know you don't need it, but please keep your comments to three minutes. I just want to be fair to everybody, so if you could keep them at three minutes, I'd really appreciate it. Yes, proceed, Matt, please.
I always do, I try to.
Thank you.
So the voters in Camrio have decided to elect two new council members. I think it's great, so I have some words. Solving issues, opportunity, outreach, policy changes. In another word, uh, changing, um, thinking about things in a different manner is important. So I hope the council members who've been here a long time will be open to some changes. I hope the new people will bring on changes and learn things, so it's an opportunity. The next thing I want to talk about is Concerts In The Park. I have to be frank, 'cause that's who I am. You know, uh, the Fiest Association, the last councilman, also the Concerts In The Park. You know, the Fiesta Association, the last councilman, also the concerts in the park. Councilmen should not sit on nonprofits. They should not come here and vote for money for it. I think it's time that we make that clear to the public, and I hope you'll consider that. I also believe there's going to be a lot of people who want to get on this, what would you say, the Committee for Concerts in the Park. And I think that, so it's fair, you might want to have a rotating president on there, like we do the mayor, and then have a, have an opportunity for everybody on that board, and you can pick a different person every year so they can actually put on the concerts of the park. It would be a new, new way of doing it, instead of selecting a person. That way, everybody has an opportunity. I hope you're, will be open to that idea of allowing every person that serves on that board an opportunity to actually do concerts in the park. So that's one idea. The next thing I want to talk about is really important, you guys. You know, when I lived in Camarillo, I live in Texas now, I've always mentioned this because people forget. At the holiday time, we all, some of us tend to drink a little too much. We're going to be in restaurants, we're going to go to bars, we're going to be with family. I think it's important that we remind people, if you drink too much, please call for a ride. If you have children who are going to go to parties, remind them that you should pick them up. Let's take a moment to remind the people, because you could not just lose your loved one, you could possibly hurt somebody in the community. And I think it's really important to remind people. People seem to forget things in life, because we're so busy in our world. So I hope an opportunity is taken by the council to remind people, don't drink and drive. I know you have a couple more meetings, just to put that out in the public. It's so important, because so many people forget that, hey, you know, I've had too much, maybe you should pick me up tonight. I mean, I think it's really, really important. I do not want to see anybody die, and it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Harold, I believe it's. Again, Harold, if you could leave it to three minutes, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And want to push that microphone down kind of close to you, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kildee. First, my name is Harold Hyman, 64, 73, San Como Lane, in beautiful Camarillo Springs. I'm so glad to be here to congratulate our two new city council people. A lot of people in Camarillo Springs are looking forward to your term. On the other hand, we're very grateful for what the city of Camarillo and the city council has done for Camarillo Springs. We were inundated by fire and debris flows and damaged homes, and the city came through for us with our wonderful city council. We'll never forget it. My involvement tonight has to do with the golf course. And you know, the golf course is being looked at by a developer, New Urban West, and I'm part of a group of people, an ad hoc committee, that's been working with New Urban West for quite a while. My background in Camarillo Springs in Ventura County, I was on the Camarillo Committee that pursued the Canal Creek develop, opposed the Canal Creek Development, worked very hard with the committee on the SOAR initiative, been a board member of the Homeowner Association, part of the Mountain Committee during the debris flow issues. I have a sense of the community. The community overall has been working to support New Urban West and their goals. We have had 32 meetings since they've come on board. Advisory committee meetings, town hall meetings, community workshops, and presentations from experts. The other evening, we had a meeting to discuss golf course design. 120 homeowners from Camarillo Springs in the area came to that meeting. From that meeting, we have formed three subcommittees. An open space committee, a restaurant and event center committee, and a golf course committee. We are committed to making or continuing to make Camarillo Springs heaven on earth, and we appreciate very much your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next is, I believe it's John Gardner. Am I right on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, John, if you could keep it to three minutes, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
John Gardner. I'm relatively new in Camarillo Springs for the past six years. We do live on the golf course. Relatively new here in Camarillo, although we've been in California for 41 years. Just recently retired from the healthcare industry and looking to get more involved in the, in the city, and I've seen some of you at the chamber meetings and that sort of thing. So just want to echo Hal's comments of appreciation, being relatively new in the Springs and seeing how the city did step up with the mountain mitigation and things like that is very important. A lot of senior folks there, a lot of fixed income folks. The other thing that we appreciate is the opportunity to continue to do study. I'm just amazed, and I'm learning a lot about how much drill-down study there is involved in any sort of project. But early indications with hydrology reports, as we understand, it'll have to be obviously approved and work with FEMA and the county watershed folks. And this was done by, I think it's Pace Engineering, that's had a longstanding relationship with the county. Preliminary indications are that they can take all homeowners out of the floodplain zone, which is very important. Everybody is somewhat traumatized with the mountain waters and floods and that sort of thing. So flooding, and I just heard SBA talk about flood zones and those kinds of things. So we think that's a very positive thing. Obviously, more work has to be done. So just wanted to welcome the new council members and thank the council for what you have done, and hopefully that we'll continue to be able to find some solid ground here going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. David Gilbertson. Is David here?
I got actually two items.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, David. If you could keep it to three, I appreciate it.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is David Gilbertson. I live in Camarillo. I want to thank all of the city council members and mayor for your public service, and welcome our new council members. We look forward to working with you. The first item I was going to be really quick on is I support crosswalk improvements in Village at the Park by Rancho Rosal Elementary School. I walk my grandson to school there almost every day. We need some signage to clearly identify it's a school zone, get people to slow down, and have marked crosswalks. Next item. Really appreciate the city's recognition of veterans. As a Vietnam veteran in the new Veterans Memorial, it touched me deeply to be there for that presentation that day and to honor all veterans. My father served in the United States Navy, was stationed at Port Wayne as a CB during World War II, and he loved this community. And now I live here. Next item, and I'll have to probably cut this a little short. We just had a presentation about disaster relief. I want to talk to you about climate change. I'm not sure if any of you have read, and it's an extensive report from the U.N. Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, or, and, the U.S. National Climate Assessment. Please read it. Upon reading it, I'm scared to death about the future for our children and grandchildren. There is clear scientific evidence that environmental changes are already underway as a result of global warming. These extreme weather events are beginning to affect us directly, aren't they? Extreme droughts have caused a longer and more damaging fire season. Scientists agree that these climate change effects are primarily due to burning coal, petroleum, natural gas, which sends billions of tons of carbon into the atmosphere. About two weeks ago, a bill was introduced to the U.S. House of Representatives to pass a carbon fee and dividend law called the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. Yesterday, Ventura County Board of Supervisors passed a resolution in support of the House bill and the citizens' climate lobby proposal for our federal carbon fee and dividend program. We need a groundswell of support from citizens and local government to get this bill passed. Please join with your colleagues on the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. Action is needed now. What kind of future do we want to leave for our children and grandchildren? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have one more. Okay. Looking at, okay. Debbie Beck. Is Debbie here? Yes, here she is, Debbie. Again, Debbie, if you could keep it to three minutes, I'd appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, all new board members. I'm glad you're here. I'm here to talk about a few things. One is the support and the crosswalks at Village at the Park. That is definitely needed. That entrance where, what you're looking at is the TK and K, as well as any special needs, and any kids that are in school district programs from the age of three, like speech therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy. So once they graduate out of tri-counties, they are assigned to the school district. So that's where they actually enter Rancho Rosal. So it's crucial that we get that passed tonight. Number two, I wanted to address the Ventura Boulevard crosswalk. I own empty hangars. I'm a little business down in Old Town. But I watch every day how no one stops at the crosswalks. I mean, it is scary to walk across the street. So I just want to, I'm glad that you guys are addressing that. Last, one other thing is also the street vendor thing. Just to let you know, when we have a rack in front of our store, our sales increase by 50 percent. Okay? It gets people to stop that are driving down Ventura Boulevard that normally would not stop. I have a giant big pink hand out there, which every day I've been asked 10 times to sell. But increasing the sales in Old Town is increasing tax dollars for you guys. So I really would like to see when you guys address, not tonight, in the future, the street vendor thing, that we're allowed to still have racks. And I'm putting racks on actual space that I'm paying for. They're on bricks that are underneath on archway that I'm paying rent on, and I've been, code enforcement has been bothering me about it several times, and it's, they said no racks, even if it's on my own physical property. I want to thank you for having the disaster relief, because the fires did really impact us significantly. Our Black Friday was half of what it was last year, and with the Thomas fire and that, and half of my client, my customers are in the Cano Valley, it just really, really, really did a number on all of us. So when there was no school, and we had to wait till 5 o'clock to see if our kids were going to school, I have a family business, so nobody wants to shop with their children. Not many people. And, and then, like I said, being 50% of our clients are in the Cano Valley, that really does impact us significantly. So thank you for bringing that tonight. It was very instrumental, and hope to share that with some of my business counterparts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do not have any more blue cards. Would anybody else like to address a council on non-agenda item? Do you want to come up here, sir? Is this a non-agenda item, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay. If you could just state your name.
It's about the concerts. I don't know, is that?
We're going to get to that, if you could wait a little bit. Yeah. Okay. All right. Anyone else on a non-agenda item?
The lady in the green dress back there.
Ma'am, did you want to make a comment? If you could come up and just state your name for the record, I appreciate it. And push that mic. There you go. Thank you.
I did turn in a blue slip, so I don't know what happened to it. But my name is Evelyn Gonal, and I am currently, and have been for the last four years, Rancho Rosal School Crossing Guard. And I'm here, I will be brief, I just want to emphasize the importance of passing this resolution for the crosswalk. Every day, I see countless incidents, things that are possible, that can happen. I'm always saying to myself, this is like an accident waiting to happen. We need those crosswalks. We need all the protection and safety that we can get for those children. We've got over 700 kids going to that school, and it's going to be growing from year to year. With Oakmont building, with all the vehicles coming and going, we really need the crosswalks for the protection of those children. So I'm begging you to please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Anybody else out there on a non-agenda item?
Well, that was an agenda item.
It was. Okay. So we're going to get down to departmental now. It's the Springville Specific Plan. Do we have a staff report on that? I was going to tell Joe, are you going to take that one?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor Kildee. So we'll start with an exhibit, aerial photograph that shows the project area for your consideration this evening. And the property that we're going to be discussing is located west of Springville Drive and north of the 101 freeway. And we're just going to start with a tidbit of information that was presented in the agenda report, but that we wanted to highlight, and that was that in 2012, tentative track map 5671 was approved to subdivide the Ran Rancho property, which actually straddles both sides of Springville Drive. So it includes property to the east of Springville Drive, and it includes all the property here in the project area. And all of the backbone infrastructure associated with what was known as Phase 1, which is the Springville Drive interchange here along the 101 freeway with the off-ramps and Springville Drive. And the infrastructure associated with everything to the east of Springville Drive has been completed and constructed in association with that tentative track map, which everything east of Springville Drive has been recorded and finalized. And that brings the application to the current status of modifications to the map for Phase 2 on the areas west of Springville Drive, which we're going to discuss in more detail So the existing general plan land use designations for the property, based on the adopted Springville Specific Plan, which was enacted in 2008, show that at the corner of Springville Drive and Ponderosa Drive is a land use for public institutional. Then moving to the west, there was a neighborhood that was set forth for medium-density residential development, and then low-medium-density residential neighborhoods with the street, and then a linear five-acre public park at the western edge of this portion of the Springville Specific Plan area. And this land use plan would accommodate up to 200 residential units. That's what's in place as of today. Now, moving on to some additional background, in January of 2014, the city council referred a general plan amendment request to redesignate the three acres that are currently public institutional to medium-density residential for a maximum of 18 dwelling units per acre on that property. And the Springville Specific Plan currently designates the site for institutional semi-public use, which also contains the existing Shoalie Farmhouse and Outbuildings. So based on that general plan amendment referral from 2014, this is what the current anticipated land use plan would demonstrate, and this is what's been analyzed since that time. So it shows medium-density residential where the former public institutional land use was, which would be connected to the existing medium-density residential neighborhood. And then everything else moving west stays the same. However, the number of residential units proposed would be reduced to 178 units. So since 2014, the applicant's been working on the technical environmental studies associated with the preparation of the SEQA document. So that brings us forward to the current request that will be analyzed and considered by the city council tonight. And that takes us back a few weeks to November 14th of this year, where our city council approved the applicant's request for an application consideration for a general plan amendment referral modification, which was outside of the council's normal calendar cycle for consideration. And so the council agreed to have that presented this evening. The applicant's request is to modify the approved referral to move the location of the current designated five-acre neighborhood park from the western edge the current designated five-acre neighborhood park from the western edge of this portion of the Springville Specific Plan out to the eastern corner of Springville Drive and Ponderosa, just north of the U.S. 101, and then essentially eliminate the seven acres of medium-density residential and the three acres of public institutional, and redesignate the entire area for low-medium-density residential. So, this proposed GPA referral modification would ultimately reduce the overall density, and it would reduce the number of dwelling units from a maximum of 200 units, which are currently allowed under the existing specific plan, general plan documents, to 158 proposed units that would be for sale units. This map demonstrates what the request is this evening. So, it shows the five-acre public park out at the corner of Springville Drive and Ponderosa. And then, the balance of the property would then be converted to low-medium-density residential for predominantly single-family detached cluster-style housing. So, the city council has essentially two options this evening. First, they could approve the modification for this GPA referral for the Springville Specific Plan, which doesn't approve the land use changes, it just allows the applicant to move forward with further processing of an application to proceed with the environmental studies associated with the general plan land use element change. Or, the city council could deny the modification request at this time. And if that were the case, then we'd have to consider at some point in the future the existing referral, and the applicant would also have the opportunity to come back during the normal calendar cycle for consideration at a future date. So, with that, that concludes staff's presentation. We did attach comment email from Mary Otten, the Director of Pleasant Valley Parks and Recreation, and she's also present this evening and anticipates speaking. And of course, the applicant Dennis Hargrave, who represents the owners Ran and Rancho, is anticipating giving a presentation to the city council for consideration also. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff? Yeah, Mrs. Craven.
Okay. So, we're being asked to, for a GPA referral that would be the second one on this one, and that one would replace the existing GPA referral?
Correct. It'd be the second request for a modification of the referral, but it'd basically be just replacing what they have in place at this time.
But if we denied everything, they still have an approved plan?
They still have an approved plan number one, and then they also still have a referral that's out there.
Right. And the approved plan has more units denser than either of the other, the approved request?
Correct.
The first referral or this second referral? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Vaca, can you go back to the slide as to what was the proposed revised Springville Specific Plan?
Yes, this is it.
That's different than what I have in my booklet, with the road extending to the park, five-acre park. That one, that's the pending Springville Specific Plan Amendment, and then the revised Springville Specific Plan.
Well, I can tell you that the three exhibits that were attached to the application are going to be presented by the applicant. So, if you have questions on his exhibits, it may be best to defer it until that time.
Any other questions, Mr. O'Shea?
No.
Mr. Remble, do you have a question?
Yeah, I've got several questions. I just want to, Mr. Vaca, could you take us back to the map or the aerial?
The aerial photo, yes.
Yeah, the aerial, the initial aerial. Okay. So, let me try and make sure I understand setting the stage, because I wasn't here when I think the dispositive action on this development was undertaken. The way I think of it, 2012, the council approved a resolution for the subdivision of the 95-plus acres and the granting of the tentative track map, I'll just call it TTM 5671, for the acreage on both the east and the west side of Springville Drive within the Springville Specific Plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we're talking about Phase 1 on the east side and Phase 2 on the west side, correct?
Yes.
And it's also, my understanding is it correct, that many years ago, I don't know whether it was in or about 2012, but this is at least six years ago, the developer dedicated land and funding for the Springville Interchange. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have any idea when the timing for that was?
Approximately between, I think it's between 2010 to 14 or so.
Bridge opened in 2012.
So, two years preceding the construction of the interchange, give or take. Okay. And so, the backbone infrastructure for Phase 1 on the east side has already been completed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the final parcel map for 5671-1 on the east side, that's already been recorded?
Correct. Yeah, track map recorded.
And Phase 1, as we know, is under construction, right? And did that TTM, sorry, lapsing, did that tentative track map create master lots?
Yes.
For all 95 acres?
Yes, it did, and included the infrastructure roadway and utility access and easements for all of the infrastructure.
So, it was intended at that time as, I'm not going to choose a land use term here, but, if I'm understanding it, yeah, it was intended as part of an integrated whole, that all that 95 acres, right?
Yes. Correct.
So, and then in 2014, there was the GPA referral that Mrs. Craven talked about, right?
Yes.
And that was to change, that was to change the three-acre institutional semi-public parcel to medium, it was medium-density residential, right?
Low, medium, yeah, medium-density, correct.
I think it was medium-density, right? That's my understanding.
That's the exhibit.
Okay. Let me pose a question to the city attorney. Based on the prior council action, the way I understand it, then, the developer already possesses vested rights to develop both the Phase 1 and Phase 2 land. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, back to Mr. Vaca. So, if the council were tonight to, the council's got two choices, right? Either approve the modification or approve the modification or deny it. Let me make sure I understand.
Well, just one comment on that. We're only approving the request to analyze the modification.
I stand corrected. This is a GPA referral, okay? But if the action were to deny it, then is it accurate to state that the developer could file right now for a residential development plan permit and a subsequent track map under the extent, the existing entitlement, right?
Yes. That's correct.
So, the logical result of that, then, would be anywhere between 178, if I'm understanding the math right, 178 to 200 units.
Yes.
But what we have in front of us, but if the council approves it, then the bottom line, if I'm understanding you right, is twofold, really, right? One is that the park would be moved, the public park would be moved from the far east, sorry, the far west. You keep changing slides on me.
I know. So, this is the request, to move the park all the way out to the east.
Right.
And then, everything would be low, medium-density.
Right. So, it's going from the far west.
Yeah, it's coming from this location.
To the east of, to the east of that phase, correct?
Correct. Yes.
And then, that's the first change, and the second change, as I understand it, is really, bottom line is that when you decrease the residential density from medium-density and institutional to low-density residential, the number of units is going to be decreased from 178 minimum down to 158.
That's correct.
And if I understand the applicant's application correctly, that also would eliminate the three-story, the potential for three-story homes at the center.
Yes, yes. It'd go to two-story units.
Okay. That's it for now. I just want to make sure I understood what the context was. Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? Okay. So, I do have some blue cards. I'm going to call the applicant, Mr. Dennis Hargrave, to come up here, please. I believe you have a short presentation, Dennis. Is that correct?
I think I'm more than three minutes possibly. Just, I'll be more than three minutes in question and answer, I'm pretty sure. Dennis Hargrave, Development Planning Services, representing the property owners Ran Associates and Rancho Associates. They've owned the property since approximately 1980, and it has a long history here in town. What I'd like to do is maybe, rather than a presentation based on merit and everything, maybe we can use the exhibits that we turned in for council member Mulcahy and everybody else's benefit in the audience as well, to put it in a specific plan context. My first disclaimer on this project always is, the project was designed and approved, it was designed by EIP Associates out of Los Angeles, as opposed to Village at the Park, which was designed by our firm, and we understood what, you know, our whole content and context of it was. So, we inherited this plan after it was approved. We were hired by the property owners who own this area, which for starting, I'll just take that whole block, was and is Track 5671. And that's an approved tentative track map. And to answer, to agree with what was said about the interchange, the interchange was done under the Springville Interchange Benefit Assessment District. And one of the conditions, when the Springville Specific Plan was approved in 2007, 08, was that no subdivision track maps could record until the Springville Interchange was completed. And there was no funding mechanism in place when that interchange was, when the specific plan was approved. Property owners worked for probably three years solid negotiating an interchange agreement, and it involved property owners on the south side, which included what were at the time the Pharoah and the Selig properties. So, all that history to say that by 2010, I believe, roughly, Mr. Perick may remember the exact date, about 2010, we finally executed a Springville Interchange construction agreement, which did require, all the dedication for the north side of the interchange came out of the Ran and Rancho properties. Additional property came from the south, out of the Selig and Pharoah properties. But in exchange for a agreed-upon sale price for the land, Ran Rancho received primarily bridge fee credits and not cash. Primarily, they said, "You know what? We're not going to give you cash for your land. We'll give you interchange fee credits." And so, for the, every unit that's been pulled only in 5671-1, which is the KB Homes Project, the four apartments, the 104 units of senior apartments that are nearly completed, those projects have all been burning through, for lack of a better term, CBA fee credits that Ran Rancho had accumulated. So, gradually, Ran Rancho's been made partially whole over the course of almost 10 years for the land that they sold to the city. So, I hope that clarifies for everybody what the background of it was. Ultimately, once the footprint of the interchange was defined clearly and construction was underway, the Ran Rancho tentative track map was processed. We did process that. We did it completely consistent with the Springville Specific Plan. If you notice, the green strip that runs there replaced a green basin that used to be here, and it's now the built 100-foot-wide buffer that runs along Ponderosa and is a replacement mitigation area. You'll notice it's in wild and native grasses and things like that. So, that's the purpose of that. Beyond that, then, Track 5671-1 was recorded. That would be the final map that you referred to, Mr. Tremblay. That's the one that allowed those first units to be constructed. It is a vested map that includes the vesting rights for the second half. We don't have a picture of the tentative map up here, but it roughly corresponds to those lots that you see right there on the existing specific plan. So, that's the approval. I hope that helps with the history, and that's where we started. By 2014, we had made a request to revise this to a medium-density for several reasons. One, the underlying land use on this property also allowed offices. It's said in the specific plan, an alternative use could be office. Well, there's no demand for office. We still have a 25% vacancy rate, by and large, across the city in office space. And beyond that, the airport authorities' limitations on what institutional uses actually can occupy this parcel are pretty severe, which apparently wasn't taken into consideration fully in the specific plan for Springville, because you can't do any high occupancy-type uses. You couldn't even do assisted living, which isn't allowed use in institutional zones. So, there were very few users. A church couldn't locate there, for example, a synagogue, a private school. So, look at all the uses that are normally in our institutional category that couldn't work. So, for that reason, we requested the change. After that time, as we began working not only with the staff at Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, but also watching the trends that were continuing, we realized that there was, almost every project that came forward, other than the Shea St. John Seminary project in the city, was a medium-density condominium or apartment project. And so, we were noticing that the intensity of development was going up, and there were few, if any, single-family, small lot detached, or any kind of single-family homes being proposed. For two reasons, then, we came forward with this new proposal, which we've been talking about with staff since about June or July of this year, and we didn't have a mechanism yet to come back and deal with these mid, you know, kind of mid-session approaches to making GPA considerations. And as I said at the last meeting when we spoke, the council, we didn't have a methodology in place to really come forward and talk about alternatives during these specific plan amendments as alternatives arise. The Park District prefers, and they'll speak to it tonight, this location on the east over the location on the west edge for a couple of reasons. One, it's rectangular and more usable. Two, it's flatter. Three, it's more visible defensive space, and they'll probably have some other reasons as well. But I think as a local resident and as a planner, we felt that this was a superior location. We also have told our clients, in our opinion, it's not our clients, they're not pushing for this, we told them, "In our opinion, we think the lower density is a more reasonable product to build, and it has a higher degree of success in a sales rate. So, we think it would make more sense to do it, and it would meet an unmet housing stock need that we see over the next three years within the city." As you know, there aren't any other single-family detached homes that I can think of new for sale, as the Comstock detached product has sold out, to the best of my knowledge. So, that's the background of why we've come to this tonight. And if I were to clarify one other thing, I do agree with what Mr. Vaca has said, is that the options tonight are, if you think this has merit, we would prefer to move ahead with this GPA referral analysis and bring it back to you for a full environmental review and analysis, and let you make a decision whether we should make this change to the specific plan. Or, the option that's before you is, we stick with this one, which is a pending review. Either way, we're ready to move forward, because all the technical studies are done. The fault trenching is completed, the analysis on that, the evaluation of the house, everything else that's needed is done, so that, and we've paid the environmental consultant through the city, and we're just waiting to know which one can we analyze. We do have the right to build this project. I don't think this project's in anybody's best interest personally, and so, our preference would be to move ahead with this. I hope that clarifies it to some degree. Beyond that, I just think that what we've talked about is that, first of all, the park brings a really strong visual gateway to the community at Springville Drive. Historically, we've all thought that commercial shopping centers and hotels were the best thing to stick at an interchange. This is a location with today's economics, that I would find this to be a highest and best use. It's defensible space, it's walkable for more residents within Springville than if it was out on the west edge. It provides a strong connecting segment to a Class 1 bike path. The city is proposing that path. We're willing to build our component of it. The city wants to extend it west. I believe you've applied for grants to have that project built out to Central. Ultimately, that could provide a Class 1 bike link from Central. Ultimately, that could provide a Class 1 bike link from Central to Springville. People could cross the bridge at Central and then connect on the Class 1 path that goes over to Oxnard, because there's a bridge already exists over the Beardsley Wash. Beyond that, the decreased density in the project would be a benefit, we feel like, in many people's eyes. I personally feel that to decrease building heights within the project by doing two-story detached units would be an improvement. And it also provides detached-for-sale units at an already-approved development site. So we're not talking about another greenfield elsewhere in the city that somebody's going to come back and say, I want to build houses on. This is a property that is in the city's general plan, it's in the city's housing element, it's anticipated for development, and we just think this is a superior approach to approaching it. Enough time has passed, and we think that it's, it makes sense at this time. I'm here for any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hardgrave? Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so we've, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from our staff. Is there any other questions from staff before we want to get into deliberation here?
I think you have not.
I'm sorry, we do have a public comment. I'm sorry, I put one, how could I forget him? Mr. Mike Michener. Mike, you want to come on up here? Thanks for being here, Mike.
Thank you, guys. Good evening to the council members. I'm just here, I'm a resident of the city and also a board member of Pleasant Valley Wreckin' Park. As you heard, Dennis Hardgrave came to our board meeting for Wreckin' Park last week. We discussed this with them, and our board is in complete agreement that this is a much better location for the park. I also want to back up what Dennis was saying to the city council here back a couple weeks ago. If we had to do this whole project over again from scratch, we would, we would have proposed a one 10-acre park instead of two 5-acre parks. That would be similar to what we have at Pitts Ranch area, where we have a 10-acre park, where we can have more facilities in there, and our cost would be offset, and be easier to maintain and better, put in more uses for the public to use. But for a 5-acre park, this, the parcel that was originally on your current plan, proposed plan, it would be, has very limited use for the community. Putting it over, like Dennis Hardgrave said, gives us a rectangle with a more usable space that we can have multiple uses for. In our meeting, we, we came up with a list of issues and concerns that we're going to work with, with the developer and the city, from our staff, going with you guys. I mean, there are issues and stuff we still have associated with that. We want to make sure that we work all that stuff out as we move forward. But I just want to say that we're in complete agreement with that. This is a much better location. Any questions?
Thanks, Mike. Just one real quick one, and the visibility, in your opinion, does that enhance the park?
It, I, I think, in my opinion, it's, it's nice, it's going to be good. I think what's even better for us is, since we're in that corner with no houses way over on the west side only, we can, like, if we put in a pickleball court, we can have lights on it, and it won't be disturbing the neighbors and other people nearby when we have this type of space with all that high traffic around it, and the hillside and open space. So then there'd be less complaint for nighttime use for that type of, type of application.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Tremblay?
Yeah, Mike, and maybe this is a question of Mr. Hardgrave or Mr. Vaca. Is there any difference in the drainage situation relative to the proposed park site, removing all the way from the west to the east in Phase 2? Does the drainage go differently on those parcels?
No, all the drainage on the west side goes to a culvert under the 101 that exists, and it's actually, would not run off as fast on this easterly site, because that portion of the site is flatter. If we did a park on the other one, it'd quite likely be terraced. You know, in other words, there'd be an upper pad, a slope, and a lower pad, but all the water winds up at the same place. However, it doesn't wind up at the same place, or it doesn't go onto the freeway through the same pipes as everything east of the interchange. Everything east of the interchange goes through a pipe that's over almost, that comes out immediately west of the Home Depot lot, if that makes sense. So it's about a quarter mile, at least a quarter mile to the east.
That makes sense. My question was focused on the efficacy of the park use, park uses relative to drainage.
Oh, I think.
I'm sorry, that's where I, that's where I was going with this question.
Yeah, this one's just, it would be more usable from that point of view, and stormwater detention is handled off-site of the park in this location, along, along the berm. So basically, they're, the park's all usable, as far as we can see at this point.
So from that standpoint, that's salutary? That, that's, that's, that's a positive?
Yeah, at minimum, a wash, yeah.
And so that was one of the.
Wait, 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 wait. You can't get away with that kind of pun. Is it, it's a wash?
No, it's at least, it's at minimum, there's no different, in other words.
I just wanted you to clarify, that's all.
The water, the water actually, oh, yeah, it's not a wash, an arroyo.
Thank you. I just wanted you to clarify, that's all.
Right, well stated. It's actually that the stormwater detention happens south of the park or beyond the park.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I'll just follow up. That was one of the issues we brought up last week. We want to make sure we don't have a retention pond within these five acres that we have all usable land, as much as possible for the public.
And you're satisfied that that is?
Well, as far as we know right now, looking at the topo maps and looking at the plans and everything, right now, we're, we're comfortable with that. But again, as you move forward through the city planning issues and stuff, you know, that's one of the issues on our checklist to make sure that we, we address.
Got it, okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Mulchay?
Mike, you can probably answer this. Will the park have utility hookups, so if you guys want to install a restroom down the road, you'll be able to do so?
Well, we're going to take it one step further. We are, one, again, we have that checklist, and on that checklist is a, we want a full restroom there. We want a, a complete restroom built by the developers, part of the improvements for the site, including onsite parking. There's a whole list, we have a whole checklist of things. And soil, we want to make sure that soil isn't stripped off and then used elsewhere, then we end up with sand or something, or compacted ground, where we have planting materials and all those types of stuff.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. I don't have any more blue cards. Anybody else like to address the council on this? Okay, so are there any other questions for staff before we get into deliberation? Somebody have any questions? Okay, with that, what is the, the direction the council would like to provide? Who would like to start? Mr. Mulchay?
Yeah, I'll start. I think Mr. Tremblay's line of questioning properly laid out kind of our options and, and the boxes, our choices. I want to start off by saying that I've never really been a fan of, of this Springville development from the start. It's always been too dense, it's too high, it's, for me, it's, it does not encapsulate Camarillo and what it, what it is. At least as far as long as I've known Camarillo. With that being said, this is a lower, this is a better option than what is currently approved. It is lower density, we're decreasing the height, we're working with Recreation and Park District to be more accommodating to their needs, and now we have a park that is far more useful. So I see the benefits in that. I can't really, I can't wind back the clock and, and change what has already been done at this point, but I definitely don't want to stand in the way of progress and, and moving in a direction I think is at least better than what we currently have.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Oh, I will. I thought Tony was writing. No, I, I had asked Mr. Vaca specifically, just to clarify, and so that everybody would understand, that if we didn't approve this, and if they weren't successful in January, if they did decide to come back and go not off time, but during the regular request for a general plan referral, then they still have something that's approved. And I believe this is better. I like the location of the park much better, and I also like the fact that it's, it's less dense. We do have some dense, some apartments to the east of that, and those things were necessary. I don't think that's any more dense than when you get down in the Daly Drive. What does Daly become? It's right behind you. Kyle LaRota, you got all those apartments there, one after the other, and I think that's pretty dense. So, you know, every once in a while, you do need denser housing, you have people who need starter housing, you have people who need to rent for various reasons, and rental housing is more dense. So I don't object to the, the things that, that are currently being built, I just think that this is going to be better now, farther down, farther to the west, so I can support it.
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Mulchay's comments. I'm not a fan of the Springville development either, for a number of reasons, but, I mean, keeping in mind, this is a, this is a GPA referral, and I'm mindful of that. You can reframe the issue to be pretty much what, what, what Mr. Mulchay has already said. The acreage is already set for the develop, for the development, the entitlements are already in place. So the die is already cast, or the ship has already sailed, or whatever, whatever saying you want to utilize, it's, it's, it's done. So really, tonight's vote is whether to approve the modifications, so the, at least ultimately, the residential density, the residential development will ultimately be less dense, and the park moved to a location that's more favorable, that is also supported by, by PVRPD. That's as an alternative to, if we deny, then there's higher density development in Phase 2. So for those reasons, I, I can support approval of the, of the GPA referral.
Since I'm always last speaking, I'm just echoing a lot of what you're saying, but I also wanted to, one of my, my concern, and I wasn't on the council two weeks ago, but was the, the questioning of why this came up now, rather than waiting until January. And I understand the policy has, for extraordinary situation, I can't remember exactly what the wording is, but I just see that as maybe a potential problem going forward. If we're not really clearly defining what the extraordinary circumstance is, then, you know, why wait ever for the time periods? So I agree, though, that the less dense, the less number of units, and I love where the park has, is proposed to be moved to, I think it's a much better place as well. But I do, I do have concerns about the extraordinary circumstance that caused this to, to come to us now, rather than January.
All right, so everybody, as being last, most everybody's already had a lot to say on this. You know, in my, in my opinion, I, I think this, it's a better project for, and you've got to remember that you want to be current in your development, you want to try to get something that, and everybody's kind of guestimating on this, what the market is requesting here, I think is really, really important, because they have to sell these units. That's really, really critical. And, you know, like, business, it's always, it's not a level field, it's constant movement, it's constant change. What I'm, I'm really excited about, though, is the park. I think that the, the, moving the park over, making it somewhat more usable, I think is really important, because land is such a premium here, that we want to make sure that when we build, I'll use this specifically, a park in this particular circumstance, that it is usable. And I think this one is going to be highly desirable. So with that, and what the other comments that the other members had said, I can support this as well.
Your honor. I first, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I want to make sure everybody out there, we have people who aren't often here when we have general plan referrals. We're not approving this request tonight. What we're approving is to have this further studied. This is going to come back to us at another date, when we will either approve that, what has been further studied, or will deny it, and then they'll still have the completely approved project. But in, in any case, for right now, I will move to approve the modification of the council approved referral for the Springville specific plan, and allow for further processing of an application for an amendment to the general plan land use element.
There's a motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Mulchay will second that? Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay. That, we're going to go down to item, back on the agenda, item 6A, which is the crosswalk, and that is in Public Works. Do we have a staff report on this, please?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor Kildee. Our traffic engineer, Jason Sumante, will present the details of this report. I wanted to start off by a little bit of a background, that this item is coming before you as a direct result of the city and the school district, who we heard from earlier, Chris Johnston, Assistant Superintendent, that was involved in discussions with the city as to address and evaluate traffic circulation situation, current situation of traffic and pedestrian crossings on Village, at Village at the Park Drive near Rancho Rosales School, specifically at the Wickford intersection. And this also was a specific provision included in a mutual agreement that was signed shortly after the Oakmont Senior Living project was approved. That agreement is between the parties, which include neighbors in the community, Oakmont, the development, and the city. And there are provisions in that agreement that state the city will do exactly what has happened now, is reviewing the traffic and pedestrian situations out there, along with a review of speeds, and the provision to study the intersection down on Bridge Hampton Way in Davenport. There are specifics in that agreement that include the performance of a warrant study after the Oakmont project is occupied. So this is one of the results of, of that agreement, and the need to address the situation of traffic and pedestrian crossings at this location. So staff has been working with the school district, with the school staff there. This item has come before the Streets and Transportation Committee, which made the recommendation to bring it here tonight for consideration of establishing a new crosswalk location across Village at the Park Drive at Wickford. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Jason, he has a presentation for the item.
Thank you. Mayor Kildee, council members, staff, I'm Jason Sumante, the traffic engineer for the city of Camarillo. I'm here to present to you, for your consideration, a resolution for the improvement of a crosswalk in the Village at the Park neighborhood. This is the, the school of issue, at Rancho Rosales School, which is on Village at the Park Drive. This is the traffic circulation that's designated for the school. The parents primarily enter in through Village at the Park Drive and Davenport. They drive up here, drop off their kids, or they pick up their kids at the end of the day, and everyone pretty much exits out of here onto Wickford Place. They come down to Village at the Park Drive, and then the majority of the traffic turns right. This is a closer look at the intersection of Wickford and Village at the Park Drive. You'll notice here that the, the access, disabled access ramps are at three corners. This shows what the majority of traffic is doing just right after the start of school and right after school dismissal. And this shows the pedestrian paths of travel as it exists currently. And the result of this, this combination leads to a conflict here with pedestrians crossing Village at the Park Drive and vehicles exiting from Wickford. As a result of this, field observations reveal that many pedestrians, students, and parents are actually crossing diagonally, and this presents an issue in that for a portion of the crossing, people will have their backs partially to approaching traffic from the west, which is not safe. And it also extends the amount of time that a pedestrian has to be in the street. So our proposal, or a recommendation, is to eliminate the disabled access ramp on the southwest corner, and relocate it to the southeast corner, and also to stripe a ladder style crosswalk here on the east leg of the cross, of the intersection. The field observations didn't justify the assignment of an adult crossing guard at this location. However, the school has expressed interest in providing a crossing guard with funds from, from their own resources. That's pretty much the presentation, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Mulchay?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. So it is my understanding that PVSD is in possession of the $50,000 from Oakmont, as outlined in the agreement, the mutual agreement and release of all claims?
That is correct.
And I've heard that they've indicated that they likely use those funds for a crossing guard, but one of the things inhibiting that is that there's no crosswalk. And that, I guess, it's either our policy or law, I'm not quite sure, but they can't utilize a crossing guard at an unmarked crosswalk. Do you know if that is?
I am not aware of that.
Okay, that's what I'm hearing, but either way. So ideally, if we do put in a cross marked, a marked crosswalk, then, if that is true, then it gets rid of that, that issue for PVSD. Trying to think what other questions I had. No, actually, that's all, that's all I have.
Ms. Tremblay?
Jason, what is the street immediately to the south and west? It's ending in a cul-de-sac, and it's immediately to the south and west of where the crosswalk would go. What's the name of that street?
Brister Park, I believe it is.
Brister Park?
The cul-de-sac?
This one right here you're talking about?
To the south? Yes. Brister Park?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Let me bring back the overall. That doesn't help.
Okay. I have a question, Your Honor. Um, I can't ask a question about it because it's moving. No, that one's fine. This is the recommended scheme. Is there another place where there's a crossing guard currently?
Yes. Directly to the east is, I'm sorry, is Davenport. I'm sorry, I'll have to go to the, to the first slide. There are two crossing guards currently here. Well, there's only, only supposed to be one assigned to this location, but on a couple of occasions that we've been, we've done our field observations, we've seen two crossing guards. Not sure where the second one is coming from.
Okay, so there's a crossing guard down to the east, and this would be an additional crossing guard to the west, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have one other card? Matt Lorimer? Matt, would you like to come up and address this, please?
Sean had a question.
I'm sorry.
I found two more of my questions amongst all my chicken scratch.
Second, Matt, hang on just a moment, please.
In the proposed location of the crosswalk, is that going to eliminate either a tree or anything? Will we have to either replace or move a tree?
We most likely will have to replace or relocate that tree. Let me fall to the location again. Yes, this tree is in the area of where the access ramp should be installed.
Okay.
Mr., proceed. Do you have anything else?
Oh, I have one more.
Okay.
And you guys, we, as a city, have been discussing this with the school, and the school has indicated that they're in favor of this?
Yes. We've been in discussion with them since 2017.
Yes. Ms. Tremblay, do you have a question?
Yeah, just one follow-up question. Jason, would you, if the crosswalk were to be located there, would you expect signage indicating to, on Village at the Park Drive, to the west of that crosswalk, for those folks who are heading from west to east toward the front entrance of Rancho Rosales School, just announcing, announcing the presence of this crosswalk? In other words, what would the signage be typically?
Yes. The design criteria requirements are that there has to be at least one crosswalk warning sign, at least 250 feet in advance of this crossing. And then also, we would have pedestrian crossing signs at the crosswalk, most likely in this, in front of this decorative lamppost.
And what about from, yeah, and what about from east to west? Like, in other words, would you have a crosswalk?
You're not.
Sorry. Would you have, sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Would you have signage in front of Rancho Rosales School for traffic going from east to west approaching that crosswalk?
The requirements would relieve us if the distance between the stop sign to the east at Davenport in this location doesn't, doesn't provide the 250 feet requirement. But if, if we have that clear space, then yes, we would install advanced signage, as well as signage here at the corner for the crosswalk.
Well, I may have to go to a different slide, but what is that distance? I don't recall what that, what that distance is.
If I'm not mistaken, this is still over 300 feet.
So we're outside of the 250-foot standard?
We would probably have to put the sign here.
Okay. Thanks. That answers my question.
Any other questions? Matt, you want to come on now? Thank you.
I used to live at the Landflyer Mobile Home Park since 94, and I was there when it was a vacant field. And I wish you'd put that picture back up because, so there's 227, thank you, 227 mobile homes to the right, basically. If you look to the right of your screen, the Mobile Home Park. So as people picking up their students, there's, imagine there's rows of cars to the right side of that. You know, you have a crosswalk there currently to the right, there's a bunch of cars. If you're coming, because many times I've come around this corner, that's a blind corner, basically, coming, if you're coming from the YMCA, and you go around that corner, and if you're driving this way, people are barreling along. May I make one suggestion? Before that curve, is there any way we could have some type of reduce your speed light, like at Camaro High School over here? They have a sign that says reduce the speed. When you're coming around that corner, and people do really fast, if you have a crosswalk there, are they going to be able to stop in time? I'm just telling you, from my perspective, I've lived there, and that corner is a blind corner, especially if people are parking their cars. If you put the crosswalk, which I'm in favor of, the only thing I suggest is that we have a redout area, so there's no parking around the curve, so they can see the crosswalk, or we put a sign that says slow down speed. It's the curve, as you see the curve to your left, I would recommend that, that whole area, because some people will park their car waiting for their kids, is actually redzone it, A, or B, put a sign that says slow down the speed. I know that area very well, and it is dangerous around that corner, because people come barreling around it fast because they're heading that way. And so that's the only recommendation I would make, is basically, like I said, there's cars parked there, make sure it's redout, or put a sign that says reduce the speed. Because again, by putting that crosswalk, it's something new for the public, and there's a lot of people that live in that area that may not be aware of that. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Just, come on up here, please. I believe we already have your name for the record, so, thank you.
If you could bring that slide back up again.
She needs to restate it.
Oh.
Get it back.
Thank you.
Village at the Park resident. Okay, so you have the crosswalk right there at Davenport, and then you go in, go to the school, and come out. I don't believe on that curve, if I'm not mistaken, I think there is no parking already on that, that curve, the blind curve coming in from the YMCA on Village at the Park. There is no parking already, so there wouldn't be any obstruction to the signs or anything like that. There is only one crossing guard at Davenport, and then we also have the issue of a lot of construction going on right now as well, so having that would be crucial. Also, when you go into the main section there, that's for the older, you know, the, the non-kindergarten TK. The Wickford is for the special, the TK and K and special needs and three, you know, under-school-aged kids that are getting assistance through the school district go in on that Wickford location. Because you can also go in, up Wickford, and there's a drop-off point for the TK and the K students there. So this crosswalk really needs to be put in because it's out, it's for a lot of the smaller kids, a lot of people are walking their kids there. And also, right next to it is a lot of, you know, condos and apartments that you have, you know, beginning families living in as well. So it's, that's, that, that intersection is, their crosswalk is crucial.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come up, ma'am, if you would. I believe I may.
She'll have to state her name for the record.
I'll just be real quick. I live at Village at the Park, Becky Gilbertson. And I drove today, there is a caution light to the east of this crosswalk that's already there, which I thought was very appropriate. When you're driving from the west side coming in, and there's going to be this Oakmont facility soon, when you're driving from the west area, there's a lot of lovely trees there, you look like you're in a residential area, and then you're going to come up to this new crosswalk.
Speak into the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. To the new crosswalk. I guess signage is nice, but I would recommend another caution light, because you're coming into a whole area that looks residential, and then into a school. Oh, I didn't know a school was here, especially new people that are coming into the Oakmont area, or anyone that's coming in new. That was just my, but there is a caution light coming from those mobile homes. I saw that today, and it was flashing, so I think it would be a great idea on the other end at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Tremblay had a question.
I had another question for our traffic engineer.
Yes. Jason, to the, on Village at the Park Drive, west of Wickford Place, you're, the speed limit, what is the speed limit on Village at the Park Drive approaching Rancho Rosales School, starting, you know, back at the Y, and then proceeding through Village at the Park Drive all the way up to Rancho, all the way up to Davenport? What are the, is there, are there multiple speed limits, to your knowledge?
I'm going to say yes. In front of the school, of course, it's going to be 25 miles per hour.
Right.
It's the school zone.
Where does that 25 mile per hour zone start?
From?
On Village at the Park Drive?
It usually starts between 500 to 900 feet in advance of the school.
So in other words, it would be 500 to 900 feet west of the intersection of Wickford and Village at the Park?
Correct.
And prior to that, going, transitioning to a 25 mile per hour, what's the limit?
I believe it's 30, 35.
So, so cars are going around that curve, they're decelerating, if they want to meet the speed limit, decelerating from 35 down to 25?
Well, they're coming down from the northwest to Village at the, Village Commons Drive, which is an always-stop control. And as you transition past Village Commons Drive, that's when the speed, speed drops.
Oh, from 35 down to 25?
Yes.
And then how many feet between Village Commons Drive and, how many, what's the distance between Village Commons Drive and Wickford Place? I don't know if we've got that on a slide.
I don't have that, but I believe it's close to 1,000 feet.
Okay. Thanks. David, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I would just like to confirm that, that it is a reduction in speed standard approaching the school zone to 25 miles an hour. I would caution the, depicting that curve as a blind curve, traveling at 25 miles an hour, the design of the street provides ample sight distance to negotiate that curve without being blind.
Okay. All right. Any other questions anybody else would like to address? Okay, so I'll open it up for council discussion on this item. Ms. Graylin?
I just think this is a no-brainer. I can support it.
Anyone else? Mr. Molche?
I think it's a no-brainer as well. Full disclosure, my wife is a teacher, a third-grade teacher at Rancho Rosales, so although it doesn't create a conflict, it provides me a great amount of insight, because I've been hurting, hearing about this intersection for quite, quite a amount of time. And I personally went and surveyed it this morning and this afternoon, as the kids were getting dropped off and picked up. And I watched that intersection, and at least more than 60 people went through that, pedestrians went through the intersection. I can count on one hand the amount of people who actually used it the way it was, it was originally intended. Everyone else cut diagonally across with their back to traffic with the kids. The only persons actually who used, who did it appropriately were a lady with a stroller and some kids on a bike. Otherwise, everyone else cut across there, so.
Any other comments? Ms. Gray, Mr. Tremblay?
So before the Oakmont appeal hearing, I observed traffic. Could you put that slide back up that shows the diagonal direction? It is a good slide. It's very, it's actually quite, no, it's not good, don't take that wrong, it's an informative slide. Okay? Because it does tell, it does tell the story. So I observed, nope, got to go to the other slide.
Keep going.
Okay. So I hung out near, I watched two different mornings, traffic coming to school. One was near, right near where the, the southern blue arrow is, and then I also alternated and walked all the way down to Davenport and Bridgehampton. I agree with Mr. Molche. That lack of a crosswalk, to me, was the most item of concern, and brought it up in Streets and Transportation, in fact, in 2017, following the Oakmont appeal. So I'm really pleased to support this. What really concerned me are the number of people who were crossing, and this is both parents and children, and children by themselves, crossing from, basically, a set of folks from the south side of Village at the Park Drive and west of Brister Park. Instead of walking all the way down, which was a long walk to get all the way down to Davenport, they were doing, they were doing this, this diagonal walk. I think this is very appropriate. What I would like to explore, though, for a minute, though, is Mr. Lorimer's suggestion, because that sign at Camarillo High School is helpful because it shows you, no, it tells you visually you need to decelerate. And the second concern, aside from the lack of a crosswalk, I do have a concern about folks decelerating from the 35 mile an hour zone to the 25 mile an hour zone. And so I'd like to have a little discussion about putting that, that, I know we're going to have, if we approve this action, there would be the crosswalk, there would be the appropriate signage for the crosswalk, as I understand it, right? But what about the idea of also putting a, some sort of additional signage or light, whether it's comparable to what's in front of ACHS or not, that tells folks, hey, you need to slow down? So I want to ask staff about that idea.
Well, that's not really on the agenda. I don't disagree with that, but how far can we go as far as that goes?
It'd be an enhancement to what's being proposed here tonight. I'm not sure technically if it's, could be included in this recommendation. It's something we can look at. You know, there's a couple of different options that we could, could look at, whether continuously flashing a yellow beacon on that reduction to speed sign in that area. There are installations that you can put in that are solar-powered for flashing, constantly flashing beacon. The installation at the high school is on a timed basis for, during periods of when school is in session, and for, and for periods of crossing, it does not flash continuously 24/7.
Right. But we're getting, you would agree, though, we're getting, we're going to be getting increased traffic from the development to the west of Village at the Park, too, and all of that traffic coming in as well. So that would be from Loza, from all the development west of, directly west of Village at the Park.
If they're going to the school, or the Mobile Home Park, or to the church, possibly.
Right, well, but they would be accessing, wouldn't they be accessing in it? Doesn't most of that traffic go west to east on Village at the Park Drive?
If I was traveling out of that development, on the Lewis Road area, is that what you're talking about? All that, I would be, take, go through Michelosa to Village Commons and go south to Pleasant Valley, and not cut further north and swing through here to Davenport and then down to Bridgehampton.
Well, I don't know if it's, if we can do it relative to what's on the agenda tonight. Maybe we need a determination from the city attorney on it, but.
I do have an answer. My answer is that you can take action on the item that's on the agenda tonight. You cannot add to it. But what you could do is, and to be a judgment call, to have the staff, you can give direction to staff to return to the council with potential additional signage that the council may wish to consider, and/or have the matter referred to Streets and Trans as a committee item. Getting thumbs up from Mr. Norman, so I guess I I'm getting thumbs up from Mr. Norman, so I guess I finally got one right. So if you wanted to consider that as a choice, that might be when you want to proceed.
All right. Any other discussion? What's the world of the council?
Okay. Let me, let me take a shot at this. I move that the council adopt a resolution establishing a marked crosswalk on Village at the Park Drive at Wickford Place, as, as been indicated in the other slide. And that would include the signage that our traffic engineer has already indicated earlier in his comments this evening. And I would, in addition, as part of that motion, give direction to staff to come back to the council with potential additional signage that would further support motorists, would further support telling folks that they need to decelerate their speed. I haven't written out this motion, so I'm grasping at straws here. But I, come back to council with, with a potential additional signage that would be comparable to what's in front of Camarillo High School.
Councilmember Tremblay, just as a rejoinder to that, our typical process for signage requests like this would be to take it to Streets and Trans for a recommendation.
Okay. That's fine. I'll amend the motion to do that, but I am hopeful that it will go to Streets and Transportation at the earliest possible time.
Yes.
And Jeffrey, I'm sorry, I don't have an articulated motion on it, but I think you know where I'm going with it. That would be my motion.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Second, we have a question.
Since you're including going to Streets and Trans at the earliest possible date with further signage, I, I have a question regarding your direction, because I didn't understand from your conversation with Mr. Klotzel, who said that the one in front of Camarillo High School is only during school hours, and you continued as if it needed to be at all the time. I'm, I'm just curious, are you talking about a flashing light all the time or during school hours?
I'll clarify, flashing light during school hours.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, so that's going to get us down to the concerts at the park.
Councilmember, I suggest we take these, we recess, we recess to the last remaining study sessions.
Okay, we'll go, and then we'll come back to that? Okay?
No, that is a study session, so pedestrian safety.
Oh, okay. Can we stay out here?
No, we'll, we'll go to that, ma'am.
We will recess to the study session and the chamber offices here.
After that.
Okay. We're in recess. Okay.
Thank you.